Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. This is the Board of Selectment meeting of 27th May. First of all, I'd like to welcome our newest member, Mr. Brian Moriarty. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Also want to thank a number of folks. I'm not going to try and do it by name. I'm sure I'd miss someone, but the American Legion, Kathy Gao and the museum folks, Buster Samansky for putting up flags. Anyway, a whole group of folks put together a very excellent Memorial Day program here in town, and we appreciate that. We've got a rather extensive agenda. A number of the things that we're going to go over are follow-up items from topics we've covered before. They include follow-up on our town meeting actions, a number of the articles, recent financial audit. We earlier had a discussion about agricultural building permit fees. We're going to close that today. There's been some work identified regarding the park in front of the fire department. Talk about how we're going to close out on those issues. We've also got some late correspondence that wasn't originally on the posting for the agenda today, but a couple of pieces of correspondence from Pliner Valley Planning Commission. One having to do with participation in the seed byway initiative. Recall, a couple of years ago, we talked about that. We voted to participate, and we were told it would take some time because there's some studies that needed to be done. Anyway, there's some grant money for the study, and we've been asked to come back and indicate, name some folks to help serve on that study group. Also, they've sent in a proposal about a shared accounting study and providing some resources there. We'll talk about that. We also need to define a way ahead of closing out on performance reviews, classification annex to the HR policy. We've got a number of scheduling things, interviews for the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer position, among others. And we'll, of course, be reorganizing the board. We'll do that in just a moment. There's no one here for public forum. We could go into the minutes. Before we take a motion to approve this, did you have any changes on the minutes of 22 April?
No. A move that we accept the minutes of April 22nd?
I have one. On first page, posted business, water and sewer rates, line three, it should be, the second word in should be two, allowance two twelve hundreds CCF from 1356. Subject to that one, motion to approve.
Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectment minutes of 22 April, the 6:30 PM meeting?
So moved.
Second.
You can't.
You can't. You have to abstain.
You weren't here.
I need you.
You can do it next time.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Board of Selectment minutes of 13 May?
Move we accept is...
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Are we following Robert's rules?
No. Town meeting time.
Gotcha. Okay. Because they're a little different then with the...
Town meeting time is by town bylaws.
Right.
As a board.
We used to go by Robert's rules.
Right. Yeah. Because under Robert's rules, you can accept...
Change.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Board reorganization. Got Jan's left, got some liaison positions to fill, also chair.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that Jeff Boyle be the chairperson.
I appreciate that. I really do. Just, it's been our practice, at least, unless someone declines, and we've had that happen before, that traditionally we've tried to rotate, give everybody a shot, so...
Yep. I'll nominate myself, then. How's that?
No, 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 no.
What do you do?
So I'm just saying...
Well, okay. Well, that's a tradition, and this is about nobody in particular, by the way. To me, the chairman of the board should be someone that's elected by other members to lead the committee forward, to do the public speaking, to set the agendas. I've worked with Jeff on a number of subcommittees, so I'm familiar with your leadership style, with your demeanor, so therefore that's why I made that nomination.
I appreciate the kind words.
I'll nominate myself, Jeff. Then let it go up to you. How's that?
I'll second. Okay. Any other discussion?
Which one are you seconding?
I second yours.
Okay. No other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You can just stay there. We'll just continue the meeting here. Okay.
Now, we've got the liaison positions to...
Okay. We're going to go right into the status report, the accountant and...
Excuse me. We've got, we've changed the chair, but now we have fire, accounting, building inspector, police, DPW, and COA on the board reorganization. Jan's not here.
Oh, oh, on that part. On that part. Oh, okay. I forgot about that part. Okay. So I'm usually on the fire and police and building inspector, but I'd like to kind of like lessen up a little bit. I'd like to either just take the police and fire, but that's...
Do you have a preference?
What do you have a preference with?
Fire or accounting?
I wasn't aware that, you know, so if you're doing that at today's meeting, I don't have a preference.
Just liaison between the different boards?
That's fine.
Sure.
I don't have a preference. I didn't see anything about the various liaison in the packet, so I have nothing to review as far as where the liaisons are.
All right. I mean, we can put it off until next meeting, too.
It's fine. Whatever works for you. I don't want to leave it a gap if that's...
I mean, we can leave it the way it is. I mean, there's nothing pressing.
Yeah, okay.
Until our next meeting, we can give you a chance.
Sure.
We have council on aging, we have accounting, we have, we have fire, police...
Fire, police, accounting, DPW, building inspector, and council on aging.
Okay. Ed, truly, I don't have a preference, so whatever you guys, you know, wherever you need somebody, I'm...
Well, if you're comfortable with one more than the other, then, you know...
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
So you wanted to stay with fire, police?
Why don't you guys pick, yeah, and then I'll pick whatever you want to do.
All right. You want to stay with DPW?
All right.
I'll stay with police and fire. Brian, you want to take maybe council on aging?
Sure.
Because I'm in conflict of interest with that.
Yeah.
And I'd like to have you deal with her.
You better hope he's not watching us. That's fine.
And building inspector.
And building inspector?
Yeah.
So those two, is that correct?
All right. I'll take accounting and DPW. Ed's got fire and police, and Brian has building inspector and COA.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve that assignment?
Move that we approve the...
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Status report from the accountant and treasurer. I don't know if we have that report here yet.
Yeah, well, I just, just background, we had, recently had a financial audit. Several deficiencies noted. We've had one round looking at status of corrective action, action taken, action planned, and we just want to keep it in the forefront so we get some of these things taken care of finally and off the plate before the next audit. And today's simply a follow-up session with our treasurer and accountant.
Okay. Well, for the last, oh, four, five, six weeks, I've been concentrating on reconciliations with the various departments. I sat with Brenda three or four times, and not for just like an hour, but four hours one Saturday from nine to, no, from eight to one. And we've gone through her budget, revolving accounts, and we're getting into grants, but I don't know if it was graduation last week or was it this week or?
This week.
Yeah. So she hasn't been able to come over because she's so busy with that. So I'll probably be meeting with her next week again. I've met with Ron Williams once, and we reconciled up through December, and he's coming in Thursday again. We'll go over the next several months. On accounting practices...
Before we go...
Yes.
The recommendation was monthly reconciliations. Are we doing monthly reconciliations? Yes or no? So the answer's no?
Probably starting now, because we didn't, we didn't have, we didn't have receipts early on, so I had to wait for that. So I have them all up to date now from Greg.
We're up to date as of now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Balls in my court now.
We haven't reconciled any cash yet. I mean, sorry for the general...
Yeah, because I got to post receipts, and then Greg and I'll get together on the cash.
Okay.
But the plan is to...
I know the plan. I just want to see the execution.
Get on a monthly schedule, then you only have to look at one month, and it shouldn't take hardly any time at all.
How about reconciliation with the treasurer?
Same thing. I have to post receipts.
Collector?
Collector, rather, yeah. I have to post receipts before I could even bother going in there.
Okay. Where are you with the receipts? Greg, where are you with the receipts?
He's up to date. I have them all now, but I've got to do my little thing with them to post them.
Okay. Because I know that was, it was laxing for quite a bit, and that's, the tough part, the tough part about it is that when everybody towards the end of the budget is trying to finalize what they have for money left, this should be all taken care of, and it should be right up to...
Well, that's, that's something separate. The departmental budgets, that's, that's up to date all the time.
Okay.
We're up to date on expenditures.
Ed is talking about revolving accounts.
Okay. Revolving accounts.
Like council on aging, things like that.
Accounts that receipts actually affect.
Let me, let me ask it a different way. So the mechanisms are in place, so you're now getting the data timely, and you're up to date essentially as of...
I have the receipts through April, but I haven't posted them.
I understand, but you're...
Yes.
Within a month?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Accounting practices?
And then, yes, on several of the accounting practices, our previous auditors would probably have either mentioned some of these items to me or given me an audit adjustment, and I'd make the entry, and it would not have been in the management letter. Now, this, Tony didn't do any audit adjustments. He just wrote up everything, everything he could find. My shortcuts, I'm going to attempt to eliminate my shortcuts that I used to take. I didn't make an intermediary entry from here to there, then there to there. I just went from there to there, which ends up the same result. Scanlan never said anything about that, but anyhow, I will attempt to do that.
Student activities? Not an agency account? Or now an agency account?
I mean, I could transfer it, just change it to a trust account.
Well, that was the recommendation.
I mean, an agency account.
Are we going to do that or not?
I can do it with a journal entry, but...
Let's go according to the recommendation of the...
That was the recommendation of the auditor?
Auditor. New auditor.
I would like to follow procedure of the auditor. That way, right, we're right according to the law and...
That's fine.
Since he's got a dependent.
I mean, at this point, I mean, all the activity, well, all the activities in the account, but probably on June 30th, I may just transfer the balance over to there at this point.
Okay.
Rather than start having, changing all the entries, you know, for the rest of the year, to a different account number, that would just confuse people possibly.
So you change it effective with the new fiscal year?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to have the balance on the June 30 balance sheet as an agency account.
Okay.
And then, beginning in July, I'll give Brenda the new account number.
Fixed asset transaction monitoring?
I'm just, I just talked with Tony this morning, actually, on fixed assets, because apparently he does have, he has the software. He has the software that Scanlan used to maintain, and I'm just going to pick up new acquisitions during the year and give them to him, and he'll maintain the actual software, which is nice of him.
Okay. So you're going, this will be starting this coming fiscal year?
No, this year.
Or now?
This year, FY14.
What about the backlog of current assets? You said you're going to pick up assets?
This year, for this fiscal year. Any purchases we made.
Okay.
You know, or leases, any new leases. He'll want those, which we do have.
Okay. Water sewer entries on the recap sheet?
I'll have to talk with him. I've never had a question from Terry Williams on how they are in the recap sheet, but I'll talk with him, and if he, they're supposed to be in a different place. I thought Terry would have told me that if they weren't properly recorded, but...
So that's still open?
I guess.
Timeliness of reports?
Well, hopefully they'll be a little earlier.
Well, hopefully, yeah.
Hopefully, they'll be a little early at the end of this year.
So the next, the next one we have is Schedule A for 30 June? Is that right? 15, yeah, 15 March. What's the date on the Schedule A? 15 March?
I think, it used to be October 31st for Schedule A. October 30th, when it was due to the state? Schedule A was due October 31st, but I think they changed it to November 30th.
November 30th? Okay.
I believe. I've seen that.
Let me ask, for the various deliverables, how do we stand?
The balance sheets, they're supposed to get that by September 30.
Oh. Why did I think it was 30 June? All right.
Or, what did you say?
30 June.
30 June?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay.
We're not even done with June 30th, and like in the middle of July somewhere.
Okay.
September 30, I think.
So what are the next deliverables? The balance sheet?
Balance sheet, September, I think it's the 30th.
30?
It's the 15th of 14, and Schedule A, November 30th, 2014.
Jeff, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have Paul put together...
Should be a list.
A checkoff, a checkoff list, okay? Of every, the dates and times and everything that's due.
On the DOR website.
Okay, for the year, and that way, we know exactly where we're at, and we don't have to go through this every year, okay? So a checkoff list of everything that, all the due dates that everything is supposed to be in by. That would make it so much easier.
Internal management control program?
Well, that's 90, still 90% done. I haven't, I haven't finished it, but I will attempt to finish it by June 30.
By June 30th?
So at least.
Okay.
Not show up.
Accounting policies, procedures? It's a two pieces. One, your, your, the 90% thing is your accounting policies and procedures?
Oh, no, no, on the internal control. Was that what you just mentioned?
Yeah, internal control.
Internal control, yeah.
Okay.
That's that three, three-step, three-step thing I'm doing. I've got the...
How about accounting policies?
Oh, that is not quite, well, that's part of it.
You've got to have accounting policies before you can...
Right.
To test them in the internal, to test the controls.
That's the second leg. The accounting policies are the second leg of the internal controls, where I go in and sort of flowchart the departments that handle any activity that affects cash.
If you can't have a total control program until you establish your policies, so all the internal control programs, go check out how your policies are working, right? If you have the proper controls.
Yeah. Well, I have the program, policies, the general, what should take place, but then the next step is to do this accounting study.
Cross-check.
And then, the third part is to do, to do like a risk analysis to prioritize where I should concentrate, like collector, treasurer.
So accounting policies and procedures, the document is done, documented?
Not quite. I've got a department or two.
And your estimated completion date is?
Well, I'm going to shoot for June 30. I'd like to have that little thing done by June 30.
30 June? Okay. Great. And the risk assessment's probably part of that or follows that?
That's the third part. Yes. Right.
Are folks giving you copies of the grants and contracts now?
I get them most...
Did you ever send out, someone was sending out a piece of correspondence to, reminding folks to get that into you?
Well, I usually do that every year, but I, I'll have to send out another one. I can do it.
How about the grant balances, Mike? Okay. I know there's a lot of, well, not a lot, but there's discrepancies on a lot of the grants that are out there, been put in the wrong category, whatever the case may be.
Well, most of the, most of the grants the town has are school, police, fire...
Couple.
Council on aging. Janey, Janey always checks with me on hers. They're always up to date.
We should, we should send out a memo to all departments that have grants, to keep track of their own grants, so if there's money left in there, they can spend it. If there's no money left in there, they have to stop spending.
Some of them have, some of them have to, I think some of the school department, if you don't spend all the money by June 30th, or you have to send it back to the state.
But I guess what I'm saying is, in order to keep track of that, I know we have a spreadsheet, when I was an assessor, we had a spreadsheet that gave us the starting balances, and then it automatically deducted every time you, you made a payout.
The department? Did this with their grants?
Well, for anything.
They should.
Okay, for any kind of accounting, okay?
They should, yeah.
And we can share that, we can share that with everybody, okay, to help them keep track of their grants and even their budgets. It would be a good idea for that.
Well, like I say, some of the, some of the people ask for printouts of the activity of their grants, and I send them to them, and they check, and if they have questions, and I...
If you make a mistake and you take it from the Board of Health's grant instead of the council on aging grant...
No. That's what I'm saying. That's why I send...
I mean, that's an honest mistake.
Yeah, I know that. That's why I send the history of what I got to the department, and then they check theirs to mine. If there's a, they say, what is this? And I'll, okay, that's not yours. It belongs over here. I just make the change.
I guess what I'm saying is, let the department make sure that, make sure they are keeping track of their grants, not just you.
Well, jeez, that's not my job to supervise them. They should be keeping track anyways, I would think. I don't know.
Are you signing contracts?
When I see them, they're supposed to come to me.
Okay.
Eventually.
Again, I thought there was some piece of correspondence we were sending around reminding folks that he's a repository for copies and...
Well, I'll, I'll send another one out. I was thinking of that in the last few days, to send another one out, not wait till July or something.
Okay. So that's open.
Because, yeah, and I should be getting a copy of all contracts and grants.
What's your biggest problem here?
Well...
Getting all this done? Just resources?
What we've gone over so far?
About 20 more hours a week, Mike, huh?
I suppose it would, it could help, you know? I just have to determine what they would do, you know?
I understand.
Maybe tracking fixed assets and stuff like that, or...
Flip it, flip it around. What can we do to help get this, oh, let's clear it?
Well, you already have.
Okay.
You have, you know, somebody entering invoices, which is a time-consuming job. And hopefully by the end of this fiscal year, of course, I said that last year, then last year was just crazy.
Okay.
The worst one since the first one for me.
Well, appreciate what you're doing. We'll be back.
Just one comment on, there was one item he had in his report, the auditor, about internal, I mean indirect costs for enterprise funds, and said they, I just noticed it like after the whole process was done there, that I believe, I went back and checked the financial summaries of the town meetings that Louise does, or the city, the town clerk, I guess, and Louise had been changing these calculations...
Updating.
Every year for the last several, so I don't think he went back and checked to see if they were. He just said they weren't done or something. Anyhow, but I'll talk with Tony about that.
Okay. But we have a piece of paper that identifies what, what these costs are.
I made up a schedule on, you know, that sheet.
Okay.
That comes from the treasurer, actually.
Yeah.
I, I thought they didn't change for like three or four years when we were supposed to do the audit. I mean, the numbers stayed the same. It's insurance, and it's Medicare taxes, you know, that, you know, that people share, like, I mean, you know, DPW, we have a payroll, I mean, you pay Medicare taxes on that, pay, you know, health insurance, so you base upon their salaries, and then it goes, then you put that in to take the money from this enterprise fund to fund the general fund budget, you know?
Okay. So we...
You have, you have a report?
Yeah, Paul has it.
Oh.
Okay. So we got that.
I calculated it.
For 15, for FY15?
Yes.
Oh.
And that'll go, that should go in the recash.
Perfect.
Okay. On the treasurer's side, do you have anything on the treasurer's side?
Yeah, I think the monthly cash reconciliation, and they're up to date now.
They are up to date?
And then, um...
Oh, I thought you, I misunderstood. I thought you said you hadn't.
Through April 30th.
Okay.
And then, on investment committee, was recommended.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was going to ask about that.
You know, I've had, I'd have five. I was thinking myself, somebody from the selectman or the town administrator, you know, I don't know, finance committee, somebody from the public, but the fifth person, if you have any ideas of who would be on that committee?
You know what would be helpful?
What?
A charter.
What?
A charter.
Yeah.
Just a title, purpose, composition?
Yeah, I got samples from other towns.
Functions?
As far as the fifth person, any ideas? As far as the fifth person, any ideas? You know, I mean, finance committee, treasurer, I guess the accountant would be the fifth one. The accountant wouldn't get too involved with that because it's really just the investments in the borrowing. I mean, you know, he only does the general ledger, so I couldn't think of a fifth person.
Who was the third? Finance committee, treasurer?
Yeah, finance committee, either the selectman, the administrator, or, you know, probably through, you know. Yeah, that's a good, yeah, capital.
Yeah, but what you really want is someone in the banking business.
Well, that'd be, that's why it'd be somebody from the, the public, the fifth one would be somebody from the, you know, the taxpayer.
Sandy's your name?
I know.
Yeah, I asked him about it, he wasn't too enthused about it, but he says he'll think about it.
But, but it's not.
It's good direction.
It's not.
Yeah, that's all it is. It's always gonna be like, it's always gonna be like two meetings a year.
It's a, yeah, that's what I mean.
I mean, it's not like you meet every, every week. It's just the guy, you know, borrowing. I mean, investments, you can't do anything with investments. I mean, it's pretty much, you know, the interest rates are like 0.65, I probably get 0.85, so that's pretty much standard. It's the borrowing that's the big thing. I mean, you have $2 million, you know, out there in borrowings, and it's all temporary debt right now, so. And I just, you know, there should be long-term debt, you know, if interest rates go up, you know, you're the hero, if interest rates go down, you're not the hero, so. It's a lot of responsibility as far as borrowing goes.
As long as we're not making any crazy investments at this point.
No, I would not. I've seen, 30 years I've seen, you know, investments go down, you know, I mean, you know, those mutual funds like Merrill Lynch, and I've already had like three or four, I mean Bartholomew, Merrill Lynch has called me, Bank of America's called me, you know, to invest in, you know, various things like that. Nope, your money is all in money markets, MMDT, which are fully insured, and just banks.
Okay. Okay, are you gonna come out with the charter?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, all right. So we haven't got that out yet. Cash handling?
Yeah, when we first discussed it, the last meeting going along with Mike, we were gonna send out like once a year, you know, like on July 1st, a reminder to the department, like, you know, these are procedures, what Mike needs, the proceeds what the treasurer needs, and so on. You know, I mean, they're good, I mean, most of the departments, you know, I have one or two departments that are still lagging on their receipts, but the majority of the receipts come in. I mean, you know, the Wilma guy comes in once a week right on a Thursday, the building inspector turns over probably every couple of weeks, okay, I mean, depending on what he takes in. There's a couple committees out there that I do have problems with, but I keep reminding them. And the problem with, you know, checks, I mean, if checks stay out there for five, five, you know, months, then they bounce. And I have that, and I got like three of them I have to follow up on. But, I mean, you know, the person will say, well, you know, this check was dated November, why didn't it get cashed? But if it's sitting with the committee, I can't do anything about it.
Should have Paul make a note to send out.
He was gonna develop some procedures to remind, send to all the committees.
Because we did that last year, remember?
Recreation had a, had a problem with, was one of them.
Still have a problem with recreation.
Because one of the things, I know sewer, we're having a problem with sewer up there, the checks were up there for quite a few months.
He doesn't take in many receipts, but, you know, like I haven't seen a turnover now for like probably two months, okay?
Okay, he doesn't, I guess the question then, Phil, to you, is if he doesn't take in quite a few receipts, how about when they do the pumping of septic systems, when do we get, do we get billed, or do they get billed and then we get the check coming in from the town? And how about the documentation on the cross-check? I know we send pumping reports to you.
Yeah, I get the pumping reports from Wilma, like, you know, one sheet to stack.
To make sure that we get our check in from the company. That's what is more, more important, okay? There should be a check for every pumping report that goes in, there should be a check.
I mean, I haven't seen many receipts, to be perfectly honest with you.
Pardon?
I haven't seen many receipts in a year from the sewer treatment plant.
Well, that's, that's a red flag going up. Where's the money coming in? Somebody owes a X amount of dollars for thousands of gallons worth of sewage. Okay, so.
Department's recreation committee, and they hold on to checks. And I've told them every time, you know, don't, you know, hold on to those checks, just turn them over, and that's it. Takes five minutes.
Phil, will you get us a report on, on what's coming in up at the sewer treatment plant, and what the dollar figure is, and who owes?
I mean, like, see, those are, those are the two departments I have seen problems with. I mean, everybody else is pretty much right on target, school lunches, Brenda's definitely, I mean, that money comes in almost immediately. Wilma said, you know, she does that every month of the week. The town clerk sends over her money a month, but there isn't, you know, the town clerk doesn't collect that much money, okay, but that comes in once a month, there's an accounting for that. And the tax collect, of course, that's probably every three or four days.
The, we took on the recommendation of advanced payment on the Hampshire County.
Yep.
Retirement system.
That budgeted this year for 15.
Is there any, any other?
No, just one thing, you know, with some of these capital projects that are going on.
Yes.
Like the water transition line, the school project's gonna start up, and I just have to have a little bit of notice when those are gonna be on a warrant, because I don't keep that much money in as far as a fund's a warrant, because it doesn't pay much interest. So I just have to sort of have a timetable, you know, like for instance, if there's $500,000, a million dollar bills coming in on a warrant, I just have to know that ahead of time.
It should be coming up pretty soon for payment, okay?
I've had one, right?
Yeah.
One, the arch, I've issued just one so far. The school is gonna, from my understanding, is gonna grow pretty fast, but.
Yeah, the whole project's 18 months.
Yeah, I mean, but they're gonna be bill, big bills upfront. We get reimbursed for that 50, what are they, 50%? But those have to be submitted, and you get reimbursed three days after the documents get down to the boss. So it's when you submit the document, I mean, that, they won't advance the money until the document is down there, and then they do it within three days. So that won't be too much of a cash flow problem.
On, I guess then the question is, how do we put in fail-safe or tracking device to make sure that we're getting all the money into the town?
As far as what the MSBA?
Using the sewer as an example, okay, when, when X amount of gallons go in there, the town's supposed to get X amount of dollars.
Yep.
Okay, there's gotta be some tracking device to make sure that we're getting our money from these people, and a bill's going out if it's not, okay, and keeping track of it.
So I can work with Phil on that, you know.
I mean, is that gonna be Phil's job, or is that, should that be?
Well, there's a cross, there's a cross-check there.
And it's a cross-check, and, and, you know, and also getting back to, I mean, is everything sort of tied in? I mean, getting back to the, you know, the audit recommendations as far as Mike, I mean, that, for instance, when a, you know, when something like that alert comes up, you know, there's problems there, then Mike should go down as the accountant and check, you know, what kind of procedure they have. And then you issue like recommendations, okay, we should get the pump reports and compare them, okay? That's what the whole purpose is of monitoring the outside, because, you know, the audit comes in once a year, so I mean, there's always that one, you know, during the year, that somebody should be looking at. You know, I don't, you know, take, pick a few departments every year. That's, that's.
He's talking about looking at your internal management controls.
Does Brian bill those things out? Those bills?
I, I don't know the procedure myself.
I thought the check was supposed, when they dumped it up there, we got a check right up there, that's what I thought, how it was set up. And if it's not set up that way, then we need to do something.
Oh, they usually pay when they dump, for, is that the tippage, or whatever it's, septic?
Septic dump, yeah, yeah. I mean, we can sit down with Brian and surely come up with something that's gonna work for us all.
He could be billing, and then the checks probably come to town hall, unless they're.
No, I never, the only checks I've ever received was, are from Brian.
From Brian?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, well, you'll start that out, okay? The other, valid driver's license, there was another recommendation, we, somebody was gonna do something on that, looks like that's fallen through the crack. Recommendation to limit our liability, potentially, someone periodically check, make sure that operators.
I thought Phil was doing that on his.
No, we do it every year, because everybody has to go through the DOT physical, so we have to, they have the license every year, so every year, I know.
It's, it's the other activities like COA, I don't know who else has, we give.
School, everybody, I mean.
Well, yeah, well, everybody that drives.
Everybody that drives for the town, and it's required to have a license on their job description.
Right, and the whole recommendation was periodically you ought to check, because they may well have, potentially have lost your license, you're not aware of it, and then you have some incident and you're.
You wanna have them driving a town vehicle.
Town vehicle.
Right, exactly. We should, we should have a list, and be nothing for each department to just take a copy of the license.
That's, yeah, periodically, all right, so.
And then just do it three times a year.
I'm gonna steer, we're glad to take a look at how we.
Absolutely.
Got that on your list?
Yep.
All right, are we all set with the status report?
Yes.
Going to payroll services, we'll talk about that a little bit.
Did you have anything else for us?
No, I'm good.
Gonna involve you.
Yeah, if I'm mistaken.
Yeah, okay. And the payroll services, Paul, you've got some information and, and why we're going to payroll services, we talked about backup for Edwina, and we want to talk with you about that.
Do remember, it's my decision.
It's your, it's your decision.
My decision.
You're, absolutely, but.
I will give you a list.
You're gonna be on the hook when.
That's right.
Edwina's out sick, and then there's no payroll for three weeks.
I already have somebody in mind already for that. In fact, I mean, you know, if something happens to her, something, I do have somebody in mind, who does payroll in another governmental unit. A school district, not, you know, out of town or city, but those are full-time jobs. You know, right now it's only two days a week, that's really, and usually it's just one, one day. The majority of the work there is that, you know, it takes about half a day on time sheets, okay? And, you know, I know you've rectified that, or DPW has used a new time sheet, I think another department's using a time sheet, but you still gotta check in for accuracy. And one of the things is, because that is taken either a half a day to a day to do, the payroll service is not gonna solve that problem, because you still have to, you only input the hours.
We understand.
So, okay, just so you know that. And I've seen mistakes made, because you do have to check the payroll.
What, what the concern here is that the payroll goes out irregardless, so if you have a payroll service just doing the payroll, they will get the payroll out based on our numbers. Edwina, when she comes back, she will fine-tune everything to make sure everything was appropriate and document.
Did they get any kind of cost on that?
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of different vendors, and it looks like we're talking about, I've gotten a range from 11,000 to 13,500.
Well, a year, right?
A year, yeah.
Because you've got the school now, okay?
Yeah.
And the school department, again, that is a large part of, again, allocation, because what happens now is you'll have a teacher, and Brenda, I mean, her, her spreadsheet, her payroll sheet is gigantic, okay? Because you have a teacher that'll be charged chapter one, be charged the title four, regular instruction, you know, some teachers go to five different allocations. Again, the real problem, or the source of the problem, is your software, accounting software, because other municipalities, okay, what happens is, when the business manager, the school department inputs those hours in, it automatically charges the general ledger, goes into a holding account. And the town accountant looks at it, says, okay, so all right. See, right now what's happening is, you know, Brenda's preparing the spreadsheet, then Edwina is also putting that, the hours in, and also has to generate the warrant to break out the teacher's salaries and that. And there's a lot of teachers that involve like six, six of different positions. The problem is the grants have to be charged those positions, like chapter one, every, you know, usually a couple of teachers work on that, that's part of the regular instruction. So that, that's a big part of, now can the payroll service allocate those to the various grants? There's a lot of things that have to really be looked at. And as far as, but basically, other cities in town, their software handles, the same problem is with the warrants, generating out inputs of things, inputs the warrant could build into the computer. There's accounting software that, when the warrant is generated, it automatically posts all the accounts. I mean, you're, you're talking, saving a lot of time there. The problem is that software is expensive, and you gotta train everybody again. So the, the software that you have right now is not very good at doing those things, like Marie, okay, let's say Marie, she prepares a turnover that comes over to me, it's all book out, different levies and years. She prepares that, it goes into the ledger, it doesn't physically get posted ledger, just goes into like a holding thing. The town accountant compares it, okay, when he says go, it goes. So again, what happens now is, I get that turnover sheet, I have to break out all the levies, then report it to Mike, whereas that step would be abolished, but you're talking a lot of money.
I know you said that you're in control of that, but also the board of the selectmen is in charge of the whole town, overseeing all departments, including yours, okay? And we see something that's not going right, we need to interject and make sure that it does go right.
Like I said, you have somebody who would be capable of doing payroll, because they have the same budget sense as we have here, and it's a school district.
You said that the software is very expensive? I mean, do you, do you have an idea?
Well, it depends what software you go with. The best, the best system out there is Munis, okay, it does everything, but for this town, you're talking 150 grand.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's way out of line.
Right.
For this town.
That's just the initial?
Yeah, and then you pay for, you know, soft, you know, updates, everything else, but it's a beautiful system. Unfortunately, everybody has to be in the same system, so you got Marie, who's very used to, she's.
Why, why is that unfortunate?
Because it's.
Why not enter once and use many times?
Well, yeah, there's training. No, it's not, well, I'm just saying that, the training can be, you know, a lot, especially with Munis. Other software, I'm not too sure, or you must have experience with Munis, right?
Yeah, I was there when Westfield went into Munis, you know, they went into that, and I was part of that, and it is, it's a lot of training, and, you know, there were, there were some glitches there, but after everybody, but after everybody, after everybody got used to it, it was the best system there is.
That's right, that's correct.
I mean, if I enter a bill today, it gives me, it encumbers it and gives you the balance right then and there. I mean, it's not like.
I mean, you know, the town spends a lot of money on capital projects, I mean, you know, that could maybe be a consideration, because, you know, that, that is just losing to 80% of the problems we're having here, because the lag time goes away. It's like Phil says, you input a bill, it goes right, and it goes right through the whole system.
Okay, well, let's get back to the payroll. The payroll is most, is the big concern here, okay? That if something were to happen to Edwina, that she had to be out sick for a month, or she went on vacation for a month, okay? Need somebody to cover that position, you can't not pay the bill.
I know, yes, I realize that, it's just I think you're, you know, I don't want you to say, okay, you'll be sorry, you know, that this happened, because.
Basically, the way it works is that's your department, and if Edwina doesn't do it, you do it, that's your job.
Correct, that's right, yeah.
Okay, and if you, if you, if you're not capable of doing it, then something needs to be.
I have a backup person, I don't know why you're not listening, who works for regional school district, who only works a couple of days a week, and she needs, you know, her, her husband was in severe accident, he's been paralyzed. He was a computer technician for Home Depot, just probably making six digits, I'm sure, and now he can't work, work. So she asked me if there's any, you know, and she does payroll, that's just, that's all she does, and it's on budgets, it's the same assistance we have. So she says she would be willing to do that, she'd even be willing to work first part-time as an employee. So I've already, you know.
Okay, do we have a contract with her?
Well, you would. You, I would.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I don't have a contract now.
What we are looking for is assurance that payroll will be paid to every employee of this town if something were to happen.
I mean, you can't sign a contract, I mean, without, you know, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
That's, that's the reason for going with, with the service, okay? It's guaranteed 100% every week, or every other week, everybody will have their paycheck.
You have to talk about it, you know, and the selectmen's being, take a lot of time, we should just have.
The drawback with having one individual to back you up, if that individual's sick, or if that individual's sick, gone on vacation, you're stuck.
I realize that.
If you have a company, the company is responsible to make sure that the payroll happens.
Listening to what I'm saying, I have a person who is willing to do that. I don't have an official contract, because I can't contract with somebody if there's no money there.
And you're not hearing what I'm saying? I'm saying that's one person, that's not a company.
No.
Okay, it's one person. One-person operations don't work in, in communities like this.
I think what Paul should do, or I should be on for the proposal anyway, find out what some of these other cities and towns have had with ADP, HX, you know, all those, those services out there, and just see, you know, you know, because I know there's been mistakes. I mean, I, I audited, and, you know, but.
I, I was just gonna say, it, so it's, it appears that what we're looking for basically is an insurance policy.
That's right.
Should something happen to Edwina.
That's correct.
So I, I think, I think what we need to do is, we know that the cost approximately is 11,000 or 12,000 dollars per year to have this other company, versus, you know, get a little more detail perhaps from Greg and the person that he's looking to, to bring on board as a backup, and find out what contractually that might cost, or, you know, what the, what the rotation would be. I mean, I, I agree with Ed, we certainly have to make sure our employees get paid, but that, that does seem a little expensive for an insurance, really an insurance policy for the payroll, right? No, so it was finished.
I'm not too sure if those prices are too accurate, because a lot of private businesses have, I don't know which one, you got paychecks, okay? And I know a Hatfield company that has like seven employees, and he pays $100 a week for seven. Now, we got three, we got 290, I mean, 190 employees a weekly basis, then you got the electric district that come like every once a year, things like that. So I think you'd better check on those prices a little more carefully, because I know it's expensive.
Oh, we'd have to get, we, you know, these are, you know, I've given them, you know, how many employees, and, and, you know, how often, you know, is it bi-weekly, you know, so they. I've talked to two different companies so far, Harper's Payroll and Check Riders, they both operate in Western Mass.
They pay the checks, or?
Yeah, and Harper's, for example, does pretty much all the towns that surround Hatfield. They do Hadley, they do Waitley, they do Sunderland. I don't know of another town that doesn't utilize a payroll service, quite frankly.
Okay, now, with the exception of Hadley, most of the towns don't have regional, don't have school districts, they're regional school districts.
That's true.
Hadley's got a school district.
Hadley does, yes. Now, check the timing, it's not going over well, and see how that works.
Just, just, we're not trying to say that we're doing away with Edwina, we need Edwina's position.
Oh, no, I know, I need a secretary.
We need a person to track everything and make sure everybody's got their time, time in, their vacation time, their, all the other stuff that goes along with that job. The payroll is just a little portion of Edwina's job, she's got a lot more than just the payroll, okay?
I'd say more like 70%.
Yeah, so, anyway, that's, that's what we're saying, we're, we're, we need Edwina there, and this here is just a, yeah, just a preparation that, if something were to happen.
I suggest we table this for the moment and come back to it, and we, I think we've exhausted the discussion, and it needs a little, little research, a little refinement as to a way ahead, and we've got some option here and some information.
Yeah, I mean, you know what, the, the, one thing that we can do is, you know, put out a request for proposals and.
See what we get.
See what we get.
We want to do that?
Who would budget? Who would budget?
My budget.
Oh, good. The business layer, yeah.
We put it in my budget.
It's just good protection for the town, Greg. No question about this.
Anything else?
I don't really want to put the thing to bed, because we've got...
No, no, just tailing for... Just tailing for further discussion. I believe that's the justice.
All right, so maybe you can work with Greg and get an RFP out and go from there. Okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Release.
Thank you.
Have a good trip.
Mr. Chairman, can we skip down to topic six? We've got Bob Wagner here.
Yes, we can. Let me go, let me go get Stanley.
Sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, how about if we do ambulance abatement, stop number seven?
Okay.
And move to approve an adjustment of $3,232.57 for the month of April 2014.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussions?
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried.
Thank you.
What else can we do here?
Ambulance abatement. Town Hall, are you going to bring that up?
That's... I didn't want to bring that up. Paul, I thought we had brought that up once before. Let Paul speak to what he's trying to propose. I think he's back to proposing Monday through Thursday, closing on Friday, and going a 10-hour day, four-day-a-week.
That would see, I mean, a lot of the communities are going that route.
Well, we have, we have a half-time secretary, a town clerk, half-time treasurer, or part-time treasurer, part-time employee in the assessor's office. What else? We have full-time town administrator, full-time town secretary, full-time essentially COA activity. Well, we can, we can come back to it when, when Paul gets here.
All right, we're on to discussion, Paul, of the town hall hours.
Oh. We'll flip, we'll flip back, back to that. Let's get Bob.
We want to wait for Stanley to come back up?
He was on the phone.
Why don't we just continue on with the town hall hours?
To me, it's, it's a matter of, what's the criteria? Is it service to the public or something else?
Well, I guess...
The fact that, the fact that there's no, no treasurer here, no collector...
No building inspector, no fire chief.
No building inspector, well, fire chief and police in the back.
They don't even work on Friday anyway, they put their, their hours in during the week. And Key is the only one that's holding the fort here, and to, many times, I've come in on a Friday afternoon and so on, and there's nobody around, and she's the only one, you know, so she gets most of her work done, whatever. But, so, I'm not, how would you feel, Key, going to a 10-hour day, four days a week?
I'd definitely prefer...
Oh, I'm, I'm sure, as I said, it gets back to, what's your criteria? Is it service to the public or something else?
Right. So, I mean, other, other communities have gone that route, saved money on their heating bills in winter time.
You're still going to heat the building.
Yeah, you're still going to heat the building, but it's not a...
You're not going to close COA for lunch.
There's no COA lunches on Friday, so... Okay, so, I mean, to look at the whole thing, nobody can...
It's a good time to get work done, nice and quiet.
Yeah, basically, nobody comes in on Friday. Those people that do come in, they're either looking for the town clerk, the assessor, or the collector, and of course, they're not there. And they tend to be rather unhappy when they find that out. They certainly don't come in to see me, and they don't come in to see Phil, so, you know, if, from a perception problem, it's, Phil and I have to deal with the, the people who are rather upset that they've, you know, thought the town hall was open, but they can't conduct business.
So, you know, the question is, do we go to a four-week, a four-day-a-week?
No, I agree, that's the question. Do we, do we think a four-day-a-week director of public works is appropriate? Do we think a four-day-a-week town administrator is appropriate? I mean, those...
Going 10 hours a day, yeah. I would say that would be appropriate, and other towns, other communities do it. Quite a few of them do it. I know East Hampton shuts theirs right down on Friday, nobody's there, nobody in town town halls there on Fridays. I mean, we can try it, see how it goes, and then if it goes fine, we'll leave it the way it is. If it does, if it's not going fine, we can come, revert it back.
What are we talking about for hours? I mean, you say 10-hour days, but I mean, what are the access hours to the town hall? What do we, I mean, are they going to open 7 to 5? Is that, is that what you mean by 10-hour day? Is that the recommendation?
Well, we could go into, go to 6 o'clock, and that way, it'd be open for the public a little bit later.
Which would be good.
Yeah, I just wanted to get a feel for what...
Yeah. Well, the funny thing about it is, Brian, is that the official hours are 8:30 to 4:30, that's what's posted. But in reality, the hours are all over the place.
Right.
And I think this would be one way to just, another way to concentrate the hours. So, yeah, we'd, you know, we'd have to work out, work out the fine details here.
Okay, thanks.
But, yeah, I mean, most communities of the size of, to my knowledge anyways, the size of Hatfield, you know, they, they do a, it's a, it's a, a four-day work week. Typically, you know, they're shut down on Fridays.
So the other thing, the offices that are currently not a, are not a 40-hour-a-week office or position currently would squeeze those additional hours into those four days, right? Should they be here normally?
Well, now that the police and the fire have moved out, we have 10 offices in the town hall. We've got eight on this floor, two downstairs. So on Fridays now, only four of those offices are open. And I'm not even sure what the hours are for the COA.
Stanley's not open on Friday.
Right. Okay, so...
Well, I think that's important. So, so currently on Fridays, there's only four offices that are open anyways, out of the 10.
Anyways, out of the 10.
I mean, I think that's the important part for the town to understand that, from a scheduling perspective, or from an hour perspective, or office access, there's only four offices you can access at town hall on a Friday anyways.
Right.
Currently.
Currently. I think it made, you know, when we had a, a town clerk who was in five days a week, that was different. But, you know, once Louise left, I said, "Wait a minute, you know, there's nobody left here on Fridays, why are we even open?"
Do you know which four offices those are that are open on Fridays currently?
Town administrator, DPW director, secretary, and the COA.
Okay.
And I'm not even sure what, I'm not even sure if the COA's open all day on Friday.
Got it. Thank you.
May I make a comment on this as a member of the public?
Sure, any help would, any input would help.
So, the only thing I would suggest, and it goes back to what you were talking about earlier, Paul, about, you know, people coming in looking for the tax collector and they're not here, is that we just do everything we can, whether we make this change or not, or we keep it the way it is, of just making sure the public knows what the hours are. Now, there's going to be out-of-town people that are going to come in and not know that, there's nothing we can do about that, but, and it may be happening already, but, you know, we have that insert that goes with the census at the end of the year that has the farm, right-to-farm information on it, has other town information. If it's not already in there, that may be a good place to, to really very clearly link, identify who's open and when in town, what offices, whether this changes or not.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then, of course, you, that doesn't mean everyone's going to see it, but at least you can, you know, you can say, "Well, we, we make every effort we can to make sure people know what the hours are of the different offices or town hall."
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Want to vote on it?
Well, what, what are the hours? So we've got to be able to capture some of the evening hours, so folks can come in a little later if we did it? What are we talking about, late to 6, or...
Do you want to put, let Paul come up with some kind of a, a schedule, and see how it's going to work for Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday without Friday?
Yeah, let me, yeah, I'll talk to Key, I'll talk to Phil.
I would suggest that, yeah, I think that makes sense. So we know exactly what we're voting on for hours.
We'll bring it up to our, at our next meeting.
Next meeting. We'll, I'll talk to everybody, we'll reach consensus.
Okay. Bob, we'll get back to your part on the agricultural buildings, permit fees. Stanley?
Just, just a little background, recall, the Agricultural Advisory Committee recommended reduction in building fees for agricultural structures from the current $35 application fee and 30 cents per square foot to, I think it was 10 cents, leaving the fee $35 same and reducing the 30 cents to 10 cents. And then, after a preliminary discussion, the building inspector and, and Bob, representing the agricultural committee, got together and came back with, again, leave the fee structure $35, and then reduce, have, have one fee of, what's it, 30 cents for the first, 10 cents for up to 3,000 square feet, and then 20 cents per square foot for buildings larger than...
Correct.
3,000. Is that, so that's a proposal on the table, they both looked at it. We asked the building inspector to be assured that he was comfortable, it was going to cover his costs reasonably, and he, as I understand it, agreed to this in your letter of 22 April. We've had these discussions, and you asked to hold off on any decision until...
Yeah, my, my concern was is that you're being fair with everybody and not just the, the farms that are, are big farms, so to speak, when they, when they go to put these greenhouses up. Because it doesn't matter if you have it on your one-acre lot, or somebody's got it on their 50-acre lot, it still takes up one portion. And the dollar figure costs, if it's going to cost the farmer half the cost of what it's going to cost the homeowner, I don't think that's fair. I think that's kind of like discrimination.
Well, I think, actually, Ed, not to use your words, but I think that you hit the nail on the head in that it's a difference between a farmer and a homeowner. And the Ag Commission made a recommendation, and it's up to you all and Stanley to decide. I mean, you may choose to make this more available to more people, but the Ag Commission felt like, you know, we do have, well, other communities have a separate fee structure for agricultural structures. Hours, everybody's right now, co-mingle homeowners, farmers. And our feeling was is that, you know, we wanted to be able to address the needs of the farmers without necessarily putting an undue burden on the community in terms of the loss of fees that you otherwise would get from people, you know, say, say from homeowners. So the Ag Commission decided that the easiest way for the town to tell if somebody was, you know, in agriculture as a business was whether or not they had their land in 61A. Now, you're right, that would basic, because of the five-acre minimum now, but that, but if somebody's got, you know, five-acre, you know, a five-acre parcel, they may be just one five-acre parcel, or they may have, you know, 100 acres, and they're both in 61A. There's no doubt that there are farmers in town that are running, you know, part-time businesses, for example, with less than five acres, and one of them is on our committee. But he recognized that, you know, you also want to make sure that somebody, well, for example, I know someone in town who, their kids are growing some asparagus, and they're selling them in front of the house. U.S. Department of Agriculture uses $1,000 of sales to define a farm. That change was made a number of ag censuses ago, and it's driving those of us in the business crazy, because basically, that's why there's a huge jump in the number of farms in Massachusetts, for example, because anybody who sells $1,000 worth of farm products is counted as a farm. Well, you know, that's 250 bundles of asparagus, so that could be a farm. So they come into San, and they want to put in a big building, or even a 500-square-foot building or something, and they go under these new structures. Kids go off to college, and before you know it, that building is filled with nothing more than their bicycles and their, you know, a couple lawn mowers and stuff like that. It's, it's not really an ag structure. It's, it's, you know, it's basically getting the backyard garage at what otherwise are the lower rates. And so we just want to make sure that, for us anyway, and you can do whatever you guys choose to do, but for us, we wanted this recommendation to be oriented towards farms so that we make it a change or provide that benefit to farmers without necessarily having an undue burden on the community, so...
I, I think there's value in your proposal. If we, we need to look at fee structures across the board.
Yeah.
We can come back to expanding that at another point in time. Right now, on the table is a recommendation with regard to our support to agriculture, to agricultural community. We've tried to do that over the years. I would move to let the board approve...
If I may, if I may, before you jump in there, Jeff and Stan, I didn't even have a chance to mention this, since we had this conversation and this came up, I got more thinking about this. And the 61A is such, chapter 61 has three provisions. There's chapter 61, which is the forest land, there's chapter 61A, which is the ag land, and then there's chapter 61B, which is sort of recreational land. And we do have forest products, businesses here in town. So I wonder if we could amend this to be chapter 61 and chapter 61A properties.
And Mike, you...
I would, I would move to approve the proposed change in fee structure for agricultural and forest-related structures using chapter 61, 61A.
61B. There's three of them.
Well, 61B is recreational land, I'm not...
We don't need 61B.
61B is...
61 and 61A.
Yeah, I mean, those are the...
So there'd be no chance of, in 61B, under recreation, putting up...
Yeah, because those 61A and 61B are the working lands, forest products, agricultural properties. I mean, 61B, I mean, basically, you could have somebody in 61B and then coming to Stan wanting a 3,000-square-foot building for, you know, snowmobile...
Dirt bikes.
Dirt bike storage and stuff like that.
Yeah, the storage, that's exactly right.
Yeah, so I, I think the Ag...
Stay under 61 or 61A.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, Jeff.
I don't know where I was.
I made the motion.
I'm, I'm moving to approve the proposed fee structure of retaining a $35 application fee with buildings up to 3,000 square feet, 10 cents per square foot, and for those forest and agricultural as defined by six, chapter 61, 61A, up to 20 cents per square foot for structures larger than 3,000 square feet.
Motion made, is there a second?
There's a second, I do have a question, though.
Second discussion.
I just wanted to make, thank you, Bob, for bringing us forward, and I just wanted to make sure the building inspector is, is on board with the same proposal.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
He's retiring for the season, so...
We just had to get everything together in the way, track it, because, like you say, if you go with B, that's another headache.
Oh, okay. Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
They're going to put something, give us a copyright in writing?
Yeah.
And when is this going to take effect?
What's that?
It's going to take effect right now, the fees.
Oh, this is at the fees right now? We just did, that's the motion, and...
Okay.
Does that, does that present a...
I need some on writing, because I've got a green... I need some on writing because I've got a greenhouse right now and I have to take
Does that present a problem or would it be a bit easier for you if we made it effective beginning of fiscal year?
Fly first?
No, not one of the things already built.
Is there a motion to make it defective immediately?
So moved.
Second. Second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, I should have been
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Get a letter out to Stanley and Bob.
I'll get a memo.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Paul, FRTA.
I put a copy of an email I got from the FRTA. They voted two weeks ago to allow Hatfield into the authority. The next step, and I think it's just routine, is, and I'm not sure if they've submitted a letter, a formal letter yet, but it has to be submitted to the Department of Transportation and they have to sign off. And once that happens, then we become a member of the FRTA. And then, of course, at that point, I'll need to sit down with them and with the, I'll need to sit down with the FRTA, the PVTA, and the owners of the medical buildings out on Route 5 that requested this, and you'll come up with a plan of action. There's going to be a need for the FRTA and the PVTA and the medical building owners to get the word out that this service is now available and how it's going to work, so I'll keep you posted on how that is going.
Can I just say one thing? Just as background, some time ago, at the end of last year, we received a letter from business owners along the Northampton-Hatfield line requesting some help in securing public transportation to their activities. And we looked at a couple options, and one was with the Franklin, FRTA is the Franklin Regional Transportation Authority, it's a regional transportation authority. They had a route along Route 5, 5 and 10, it subsequently could connect to Pioneer Valley Transportation. And as Paul mentioned, the process is one, the FRTA voted to accept our participation and now, because they are a regional transportation authority, they're under the Department of Transportation in the state, so it goes to the state, and I presume that's simply a rubber stamp. But a couple things, I think the, suggest that the town administrator notify gentleman from Danko who originally submitted the request to let him know kind of where we are. And you might, at the same time, broach again, what I understood was at least an informal acknowledgement that they might be willing to contribute some funds toward this, to see if they're still willing potentially to do this.
That was mentioned by one of the property owners that they'd be willing to
So that
To help out financially.
That might be good to raise. The other thing, though, what is the, what is the dialogue with PVTA, Pioneer Valley Transportation, sorry?
Well, I think there needs to be coordination between, I mean, PVTA needs to help get the word out to their communities, because that's where most of these people are actually coming from. They're coming from the PVTA region to those medical facilities. So PVTA needs to get the word out that now there's, you know,
This connection.
There's a connection
You're just stopped or whatever.
In downtown Northampton that you can get on the FRTA and it will stop, you know, with that facility.
The way I understand it, Pioneer Valley Planning Council goes to the spine medical building over here in Northampton already?
I don't think so, no. No, in fact, there was a, there was a newspaper article.
Not the one in Hatfield, I'm talking about the one in Northampton.
Yeah.
That's from the
At the intersection of 91.
The DPW, yes, that one there, that's in Northampton.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So they would only have to come a little bit further up the road to hit the other medical building.
My understanding was that, because there was a newspaper article a couple months ago, that PVTA was looking to change their routes and they were looking to bring the buses as far north as the River Valley Market, because now, I think, as far north up Route 5, I think is, you know, the shopping centers down there.
Yeah, they do come to River Valley, because I see a bus
Okay, so they did change it.
Little thing out there.
Yeah, but to my knowledge, they don't, they don't go as far north as that other building.
Somebody had mentioned that they were, they were coming to the spine place.
Oh.
But that's something that
Well, we'll find out, I'll find out.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that?
So you're going to let, all right. No, it's the information.
Okay, public safety building.
Okay, well, yeah, not too much to report. I think you all know that the police and fire and ambulance have moved in. I think they're pretty much situated, not, they don't have completely everything together from what I understand, talking to the fire chief last week, but they're in operation. We are having some disputes with the contractor, ongoing disputes. I suspect it's going to take a while before this all gets resolved. But the last payment request that was submitted, the architect made a number of deducts on it, they protested that, and the deducts were all legitimate as far as I'm concerned. And they raised the issue of unanticipated costs with the installation of some of the windows, so they're looking for some recuperation on that, so that we're going to be, need for some more discussions, so it's where
You and I spoke, Paul and I spoke a little bit about that. I actually sat in on their meeting one, a couple weeks ago in here, I didn't know they were meeting and just happened to be here, so I sat in. They're looking for about $3,000 to put in the windows, they claimed over here, that was part of the contract, but because it was ordered as a new installation, it came with a plan, so it didn't work the operation, so they had to do much more, it was much more involved to put the windows in. I mean, me as a contractor, I've done that kind of stuff, and I told Paul, I told him, I says that probably each window would be about, what, 500 bucks, I thought, additional? So that'd be like 1,500, and they sent the bill for like 3,000, so I have a little problem with the amount of money that they put in there, okay? Because they did have to put the windows in anyway, okay? It's just a matter of, I just wouldn't have put it in the way they did because it cost, it took them too much time, okay? I would have done a little bit different, but they did what they did, so, I mean, they have to be responsible for some of that bill also.
Okay, there was a whole list of things that we looked at back some time ago. They took care of the other items, and that wasn't even the punch list.
Yeah, most of that has been resolved. I mean, there's still, there's still some punch list items that need to be dealt with, so it's going to be a while before this is all wrapped up.
Paul, when you make up the packages or Key, oh, she's not here, Brian doesn't, you don't really know what's going on here, Brian, but if you would make up a special package for Brian just to add extra information for him, that way it'd be easier for him to follow along, at least he can take a look at it.
Yeah, I've got some of the info just from watching the meetings, but I don't have anything, you know, like you said, Ed, as far as a packet or in writing.
Just make it easier for you to make decisions and stuff like that.
Sure, yep, thank you.
If you had a little more
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, it's all part of our procedure, but Brian's new at this, so.
While we're on that subject about the public building facility, as well as the move from the police and fire, I just have a question as, are they done moving out of this building?
Police
The only reason I'm saying that is because it seems like every few days, there's a load of stuff down there that has to be taken out. So I want to know, are they just going to keep doing that or are they just going to make one initial move and get it all out of here?
Police is out of here, I'm not sure about fire.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if Bill's
And are them rooms clean?
They should be cleaned at the end, I mean, at least swept out. I wouldn't be too concerned
You just don't want it to come back to the DPW and have them say, okay, we're done with what we have and there's a pile of crap down there that we have to move again.
Move or?
Or get rid of again. I mean, we had offered both departments to bring a truck here, to leave the truck here, so they could load it right into the truck, and a couple weeks ago, there was about 15 or 20 big bags loaded with stuff in the back that they had to haul out of here.
Okay, because I know the police is totally out of here now. I'll check with Bill on my end and see if he's totally done with it.
One other thing, police and fire need to post whatever their hours are in a visible place out here, and there needs to be some clear instructions about entry, how you get in. I mean, you go to the door, the door's just locked and there's
Well, there's a doorbell there, there's a doorbell
When was that put in?
It's been there.
Not on the fire, there is.
Not on the fire, but on the police, you can get in anytime, or just push the button and they'll come out and
I went over to see Bill.
Yeah, you can't get in.
Okay. He usually, if he's there, he usually puts that little block of wood in there. What was supposed to happen, those locks were supposed to be able to latch open, and the contractor never put that type of lock in, so that's a whole nother screw up.
Well, for both of them, there needs to be
Right.
A clear indication of when someone's going to be there and how to enter.
I'll make sure that they post their hours.
Is the bell coming for police?
For the fire.
Or fire, rather. Is that?
I have no idea where that was.
What was that again?
Is someone getting the alarm for the fire department for entry?
A doorbell.
Doorbell or whatever?
Or the alarm? I told Bill, when this thing is all done, get one of those portable ones that
He has wireless.
Sensor ones, and you put the button out there and automatically rings inside, okay? You don't, it's wireless, that's what it is, so.
All right, well, this gentleman came over, I was sitting over there
I mean, there's a lot of little things
Asking, he couldn't get in.
A lot of little things left to do, like that and stuff.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the funds are there for. Okay, while we're on the safety building, I just want to make notice that the fire department, in case you guys aren't aware, the fire department spent a lot of time painting the fire station, it looks beautiful, they did the ceilings, the walls, they cleaned up everything, they redid the whole interior, all by donations, it didn't cost the town one penny, and that was greatly appreciated, they did a wonderful job, they organized it, put in these sections for their clothing and stuff like that, and they really did a wonderful job. So I just want to tell them thank you for doing that for the town of Hatfield here. Okay, next town meeting follow-up.
I don't want to put that on there.
Okay, but every year we have that, and we should have a list, I believe that's where you're going with that.
That's where I'm going.
Go ahead.
Here's, I brought them since they weren't in there, if you want to, just, some are just real quick things, but you answered the question at town meeting, Phil, on Article 4, about South Valley and Pantry for Chapter 90, but what about Mountain and Old Stage Roads that you would, are those off the list for?
No, those were included, those two roads are being done with the pothole money, the extra funding.
Okay, and that's going to be done by, has to be executed by?
September 1.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So you're on track, okay. Article 5, this is on, okay, we voted the school project, now just asking Paul, do we have any, we have nothing to do right now. We're on hold
We're on hold.
Until the contractors sign
Correct.
The contract.
I have all the paperwork together that I need to submit to the state with, for our contract with the state. The only thing I need is, at this point, is a certified copy of the vote at town meeting from the town clerk. Once I have that, I'll submit that to the state. The contracts for the two contractors were submitted to them for their signatures, so those will probably be coming back this week or next week, and so they'll be ready for the board's signatures by the next meeting, I would anticipate.
Okay, so we're okay in there. Article 6, just for information, I just sent a note over the weekend to HCOG that we adopted
I saw that.
That draft article
Thank you.
For participation in Hampshire Solar. Article 14, we, this amends the, recall, we have certain roads that have weight limits, Lynnseed, Old Stage, Rocks Road, portions of Plain Road, and we changed the fine regarding overweight trucks, the 250 actually covers other things. But the key thing there is signage. Have we got signage on all these roads?
Not at the moment.
Okay, well, we need that soon, and you can't, you can't, you can't enforce it unless
Unless there's a sign.
Unless it's properly signed, and
I mean, there's a sign up there on weight limit.
Well, there has to be, has to be the right
There should be posted with the fine.
The weight limit, it needs to be with that.
Should be the weight limit, where that starts and where it ends, you're right, the timeframe, 1 February to 1 May, and what the weight limit is. And it needs to be on all those roads.
That goes for everything except emergency vehicles, oil trucks
That's all covered in the, that's all covered in the bylaw, all those exceptions. But I didn't realize there was one on Plain Road, too.
Yeah.
So, you know, part of the issue with CNS traffic, although I haven't heard a lot about that
It's really cut down since we posted the signs on Route 5.
Okay, well, this is another way
Every once in a while, we get a strike there, but that really helped with the signs out on Route 5.
Okay, so you're, you've got signs being made and going to be posted. Article 18, I just sent a note to town clerk, could never understand why we were doing fees, but the, our town bylaw says, we set the fees. This is on 18 for dog licenses. I never, never understood why town meeting have to set dog license fee, that's, anyway, I'm trying to straighten out with her, from now on, we're back to
Well, they're, by deleting the subsection licensing, they're placing it with the following, okay, because you're changing the zoning, or changing the bylaw, that's where the town meeting comes in.
Okay, so we're
We set the fees, but they
We're back to setting the fees now. The big one is Article 19 on expedited permitting. We adopted that, and our obligations are, A, identify a qualifying parcel as a priority development site and obtain the owner's permission for participation within 120 days of adopting Chapter 43D. Point a single municipal point of contact for streamlining permitting. Adopt local rules and regulations to comply with the 180-day permit timeline. Determine and make available the requirement for each permit. Establish a procedure for identifying necessary permits for a project. Establish a procedure for determining completeness of the required submissions. And after, of course, 120 days, the town must render permitting decisions on priority development sites within 180 days. So there's some staff work to be done here, and this is primarily the building inspector and someone perhaps from the planning board getting together and working out the process and putting pen to paper and defining what that process is such that, you know, we do these permits within 120 days. And then the other thing is
You're going to have to have follow-through, too, you know, make sure that, have some kind of a checkoff list.
Yeah, well, one, they need to do, write down a piece, on a piece of paper what the process is and publish it, make it, have it available for the public. process is and publish it, make it, have it available for the public. The other, the other piece is, they're identifying a qualifying parcel. And this is one that, it's eligible for redevelopment or development of at least a 50,000-square-foot gross floor area. And I know, Stanley knows of one right now, and it's on Route Five.
Okay.
And the owner is interested in a facility exactly that size, so we need to get that nailed down. And I'd asked Paul earlier if he'd check with our acting town attorney about what kind of agreement do we need to, between the town and this individual, that reflects his or her permission to identify this as a priority development site.
Okay.
So, waiting on that, but then, so, got to get that piece of paper, then we have to negotiate with, or negotiate, just get approval from the landowner, that's one. We might also think about what are some other potential parcels, and again, we'll-
I think the parcels will come up as, as they go, because, I mean, there's a lot of, there's 60 acres up there on North Hatfield Road.
Well, that would be the one that all-
But when they come available, then, you know, that's when you would implement that.
Within 120 days, we need to have at least one identified, and then-
Well, this one here on Route Five would be, and then you could, you could also identify the 160-something acres there on, on the left-hand side.
And we have, we don't, we don't have an active Hatfield redevelopment authority who ought to be-
We're shy two people on that. I don't think they were voted in, were they? I didn't even check.
I don't know.
Were the, no, nobody wrote, wrote names in, usually write names in, but I think it's up to us, if there's vacancies, we have to find some people that would be interested in that. And us along with the balance of the committee appoint to that department.
Well, as a way ahead, I would move that the Board of Selectmen designate the building inspector and request a designation from the planning board to develop and publish the process required for implementation of Chapter Forty-Three D.
By July first.
Well-
Stanley's leaving.
Well, but Bob will be here.
Okay.
So, it's, I'm saying the office of the building inspector and the planning board. So, that's, that's a motion.
Motion been made, is there a second?
A second discussion.
Sure.
Discussion and-
So, do you want to put a date on there, though? So, it's, I mean, or a timeline, so that it gets done within a certain amount of time, so that we have it?
Okay, well, I, the way I phrased it was, to identify the process per Chapter Forty-Three D. It gives a date, it's within 120 days.
Okay. All right.
So, it's contained within-
Within three months.
Understandable, but, so, but we could get that on the 120th day, or we could get it next week.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know how you want to-
I'd like to get it just as soon as possible, you know, within next-
Give them some time, obviously, to work on it.
By the end of fiscal year, if that would be-
Okay.
June 30th.
Maybe put a memo out to them that we're looking to see if this can be completed by fiscal year, June 30th.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Motion been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the other is, how are we going to execute this part? Identify the qualifying parcel and getting permission. We've already got the piece of paperwork coming. Are we going to ask? Who's going to do that?
I think it, I think it matters on the project, okay? You can't just go in and, because there's 60 acres up on North Hatfield Road, and you designate that as a-
Priority development site.
Prioritarian site. And if the homeowner's not ready, or if the landowner's not ready to sell it yet, what good is it? Okay? It's when they're ready to sell it, I think that's when it becomes an issue. And then-
Yeah, but we have to identify qualifying parcels that would be subject to this expedited permitting process.
And we can't do a blanket coverage of all-
We have to get the owner's permission.
So, this is going to be more of a project than we thought. We thought, or I thought it was going to be just the planning board, had to execute it within so many days.
Yeah, well, it's, and, well, it's not just planning board, conservation permits, building inspector, I mean-
Everybody to make this thing-
Right.
Expedited permits, that's what, that's what it's all about. But when you start looking at, when you start looking at all the parcels, there's a lot of parcels in town, I had fun.
I don't have all the background that we're referring to, but isn't the, is the 120 days effective once a parcel is brought forward to be developed?
That's the way I took it, but-
I mean, you're saying, so, within 120 days of when town meeting voted to allow this, we've got, we, the town has to identify the potential parcels that could fit into this category?
I mean, we could, we could, if this is the way it reads, okay, with the 120 days, then we could get a list of all the parcels from the assessors, but then we're going to have to get the landowner's permission to go under expedited permits.
Right.
And I don't see a pro, I don't see anybody would not want to, want to sign that, okay? Because it would be beneficial to them.
Right. Does seem premature, though, without a project coming forth-
Way premature, way premature.
To go through all that with the people.
Well, let's, how about if we focus on the one that's-
Yeah.
That's what I would do, and then take one at a time.
Out there now, and then advertise that, that we have adopted this, and if other, if there are other interested landowners that have parcels, that they'd like to get advertised as a priority development site that is potentially, someone could develop here and be assured of getting all their permits within 120 days, they could, they could identify them.
The standard should be 120 days. We shouldn't have to be going to ask somebody, 120 days, 120 days, that should be it for everybody, it doesn't matter if they're-
But that's why, that's why, that's why everybody was all supportive, because they say, we do this anyway. But, by adopting this, that was, remember, one of the criteria-
Has to be done.
One of the criteria that you get points for on Mass Works projects.
Okay. So, that's what this is important in.
So, there's an ulterior purpose here. We got, we got priority consideration on grants because we have adopted the expedited permitting process.
Well, so far-
Even though we already do it anyway.
So far, we qualified on a lot of things, and we didn't get the grant money, so-
Trying to pack away, and then-
You know, we do so much work, and then we don't get the grant, so, a little frustrating on our end. All right, so, if we recognize with this one parcel that we have going, I think that's what we should concentrate on right now. And that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Well, let's, who's, who's got, Stanley, Stanley's been in discussion with-
Motion been made and seconded that we appoint, or we have the building inspector work on that, along with a representative from the planning board, which, Paul, you'll get a letter out to the planning board, or a request that someone sit on this committee and move it forward.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, along with the building inspector.
Well, what we could do is give that group a whole set of tasks.
Yeah, and let them-
Let them, and-
It's going to take more than, maybe two people.
Well, no.
We'll see.
Just a matter-
If they need more help, they can come back to us.
Right.
We'll point another person.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
John Paul?
Yep.
Okay. Do you have anything else on the town meeting articles?
No, I think we're, but we, we do need to kind of track these. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I do, I do have, I do have some others. We really should create a committee to plan and execute the Town of Hatfield's 350th anniversary. You know, remember, we set up a small fund? It takes a few years, so, my suggestion would be, at least we advertise that we are trolling for individuals who would be willing to-
Represent the town's portion, okay? What do you suggest? I mean, you don't want to make it too big, because it's going to be big enough to begin with, when you go and you start planning an event like that. To me, three members on the town board would be, I think, efficient, and then you're going to have-
Subcommittees.
You're probably going to have subcommittees of 20, 30 people doing this whole thing.
There's a lot of work here.
Yeah, but the, the goal or the plan for the town share would be to monitor everything that's going on, and then come back and report to us. That's the way I would see that. I don't know if you guys see it any different than that. Okay, at least we're on top of who's doing what and when it's being done, and, you know, if we can do that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Well, at this point, we agree that we should at least form a, form a committee and get it out there.
Want to make a motion that we establish a three or five member-
I move that we appoint a, that we establish a committee to plan and execute the Town of Hatfield's 350th anniversary, and we solicit volunteers to serve.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose?
We just, just need to get it moving.
Yep, I agree with that.
Articles Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, you're going to get, we have a report due this week to Department of Public Safety, AAB.
Yes.
Okay, and you're going to get that done?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing, we have a report due to them in September, and so, how about in that report, who's there? Are you doing that report?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Phil and I will do it.
All right, so, in the September report, also indicate that we've established a stabilization fund for the town hall renovation, and we put that, free cash-
Right.
Into it, and then we have other CPC funds that have been allocated for it. So, that could be part of the September report. And, you two are going to worry about future reports. Article Twenty-Four. It would be helpful to hear the town administrators' proposed spend plan for the town hall furnishings. I know-
Yep, working on it.
I understand. I know Stanley is, the building inspector, has been looking for a safe for some period of time, and there's filing cabinets, chairs, other kinds of things, but let's-
I think we better wait until we put the new building inspector in place, and then see what we really need.
Well, it's not just, it's not, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that we have the town administrator develop a proposed spend plan for-
Oh, oh, definitely, definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Article Twenty-Five, okay, we just talked about that, you're going to notify the requesters, Danko, about the FRTA action, and explore the financial commitment, if any, that they might make. Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Eight, DPW is just going to execute, that's on the meters, the North Street project. Prospect Street, Prospect Court Bridge Study. We've got $5,000 for feasibility of making that a-
Yeah, my, you know, of course, we can't do anything-
A walk.
Until July one, but I'm sure, you know, we use comprehensive environmental for all our engineering work, and I'm sure they have somebody on staff that could conduct that study for us, so, that was my thought on that.
Okay, wait a minute, study for what? No, remember, we got the CPC funding to take a look at-
For the bridge.
Planking the bridge and will it hold a pedestrian-
I was thinking North Street.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, okay.
I was going to say, for what you'd pay for a study, you'd be able to put the whole thing in.
Sorry.
This is just a quick feasibility-
Engineering analysis.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so, you're going to run with that?
I'll run with that.
Okay. That's to look at potentially rehabbing it and restoring it for pedestrian and, and pedestrian traffic, as opposed to vehicle. Article Thirty-Five, I guess, who's, Open Space came in with that, that's acquiring the two parcels. We're going to look to Open Space and Conservation to staff that. Article Thirty-Eight was noise that was tabled. One thing that came out of that, though, was it would be help, citizens have a right to petition. So, and they need to know, or have someone or something available to them to explain, this is what you need to do to get a petition on the warrant. And we don't have that, and we had people here walking around town hall asking, how do you do it? And-
Set up a procedure.
Yeah, just do a little, one little paragraph, this is, if you have a petition, here's a sample of what you need, the names and addresses of registered voters, how many, you turn it into the town clerk, understand that the town does not edit it, it does not send it for legal review, it stands alone as submitted. Just a paragraph or two would explain, that would be very helpful. So, Paul, Paul and I talked, he was going to talk with the town clerk about just creating some little-
All right, on town meeting follow-up. One thing we did last year, it was very helpful, or two years ago, and we didn't do it since then, and I think we should get back to that, is a list, a spreadsheet of all the articles that need to be addressed and where we're at, and get an update every time we have a meeting, get an update on what's been done, completed, needs to be done. That way, Paul, Phil, I'm not going to be like Jeff and keep track, and I keep hollering at Jeff because he keeps, you guys, he keeps doing your work, both of you. And that I don't think is, it should be. You guys need to be, come together, pull these lists together, make sure that things are being done, and it's not up to him to keep track of what's going on. It's up to us to create, or for you guys to create us a master list, and then we'll go down through the master list, just like what Jeff does. So, I'm looking for that, and if, Brian and Jeff, if you've got anything different for that, or any ideas, I think we ought to bring it forward now and start moving forward, so-
We have, we have a, we have a list for this year, and you've seen it.
Yeah.
But we don't look at it every single meeting.
Well, I think it should be part of our minutes, I mean, part of our agenda.
If you want a copy for every single meeting, that's easy to do.
I think we should have that, so we know where we're at, at any bit, at any given time, we know exactly where we're at. Okay? Jeff, I mean, I watch Jeff, all the paperwork that he does here, and I keep telling him, quit doing the work, quit doing the work, okay?
It's, I know what needs to be done, but so-
It's right, but it's managing the whole thing, and this is something that you, Paul, should be doing, and you, Phil, should be doing.
Well, there's other articles out there as well, not just me and Paul. Paul or I, I mean, there's other people that do have things that are on that article that should be included in that conversation.
And communication is a big thing. I want to make sure that we're being communicated with, that all three of us know what's going on. To this day, I don't know what's going on on Route Five, where the, where the road was over the 91, or over the Mill River Bridge, where it was collapsing.
And when I comes to my report, I will let you know.
Okay. Okay. But just a little, little memo to all of us, what's going on there, and what's going on with the water transmission line, that kind of stuff. All right, I just want to keep us in the loop and updated. Okay?
Okay, that's all I had on town meeting.
Okay.
And we talked about, on the budget side, well, we talked about payroll services and kind of sorting out scope and who's going to be doing what, coming back to that. But what about on the accounting side? And I say that now, we have money in the budget to cover down some additional resources for the accounting side. We have, Paul has explored with HCOG, potential of augmenting our services, and we got today, or over, last couple of days, excuse me, just before the weekend, a note from PBPC with District Local Technical Assistance- a note from PVPC with district local technical assistance funding, a proposal for, yeah, it's for you really, but to look at possibility of a shared accounting function or is there some way, you know, we want to participate in that. Over to you on.
Yeah, we had to submit a letter of interest to PVPC, which was done. So I think they were waiting for one more community to send in a letter. It's still kind of unclear to me, you know, the specifics of that project, but, you know, I'll be pursuing it. With the HCOG, right after town meeting, I sent Roland at the HCOG an email saying, well, we now have the funding, you know, let's set up a time to have a meeting and figure this out. So I haven't heard from him. I thought perhaps maybe he was on vacation, but actually, I was going to call him today. I'm wondering, you know, I'm not sure what the situation is there, but I'll find out.
Well, we got the package from PVPC, who's asking us to sign on to participate in that shared accounting function.
Right.
Are you recommending we just defer that for the moment?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's, until the next meeting, let me find out more what's going on.
Okay.
Okay, do we, performance reviews? Do you want to just touch base on that?
I'm, I'll do the town administrators. You're doing the fire chief and the police chief. Jan.
I'm not going to do the building inspector because he's out.
Exactly, yeah. Jan was supposed to be doing the DPW director. I'll do the accountant. And we were going to skip the building inspector because he's retired.
Right.
And the ambulance director retired during the year and left, so, and then we subsequently put, oh, ambulance under fire anyway.
Right.
So, so the ones we have are town administrator, fire chief, police chief, director DPW, and accounting. You know, I got it, so, okay, we're straight, we're going to get them done? All right, the other.
Mine is half done. I just got to do a little bit more on them.
Just to cut, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to, so is Jan, what's the process?
Jan drafts, he was our liaison for DPW, for example.
He's not an elected official anymore, so.
No, but he.
He said he already completed.
He was the reporting official. We'll close it out for town meeting.
And if it doesn't matter.
Or for Election Day, whatever that is.
There's nothing tied to this whole thing, that's my problem, okay? I, if it's tied to something, then it means something, okay? The whole process means something. But if not tied to anything, it doesn't give them an incentive, it doesn't give them a dollar figure, it just says, yes, they did a good job, no, they didn't do a good job, here's the things, it's a lot of work to put it all together, but it doesn't mean anything other than the paperwork and the follow-up that says we have to do this.
Well, I got two notes here to myself, forms and timing. I was going to propose that we change, to avoid the kind of situation we're in now, we're chasing Jan to go, after he's left, to write the reports when he's left the board, that we change the cycle to a calendar year. And I say that for two reasons. One, it avoids the business of when a member departs from the board, number one. And number two, it can then be positioned better to influence budget.
I agree with that, that's a good concept on that. So that would make sense to me. And that way, we could make it part of the process, okay? If we find that they're not doing their job and you give them a chance and come July 1st, they may not get an increase or they may get an increase, or they may get an incentive, okay?
Exactly.
Whatever we can do, so. If it's tied to it, then that makes sense to me. But if it's not tied to anything, it's kind of like a waste of our time.
Well, I, if I may, I think that it's important for whoever is getting the review to know whether it's tied to money or not, that, you know, how the board is feeling, their interaction with them is and what their performance is. I would agree with Jeff that a calendar year makes sense, because, so you're talking January 1st to the end of December. So if there is a changeover in a position, then each person would have approximately six months to get a feel for that particular position. So I think that makes total sense, actually.
And final motion?
Yeah, effective.
1/15, is that?
Yeah, effective.
That makes sense.
January 1st, however.
January, let's, well, how can we, how can we make a transition?
Right, we have to sort of carry over the, from now till then, right?
Yeah, just let it go, just forget about the.
This one now?
Performance reviews right now and let it go.
Close it out?
January 1st.
Okay, so then what we could do is simply, for example, get an input from Jan for his time with DPW, for example. And, all right, so I move to extend the rating period of our direct reports until 31 December and change the cycle of reporting thereafter to calendar year, beginning 1 January 2015.
Okay, a motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
So, so for this point, would we still go through the performances as far as sort of a mid-year cycle review? Are you still going to do that part of it right now?
Well, we're supposed to have some kind of discussion anyway.
Okay.
So that can still, the whole, the value of performance reports is really to prompt communication, period.
Absolutely, which I, why is important to just, I think, personally, I think that it's still important to go through, at least to some degree, the process that was in place to do the performance review effective in May, but now that it's been changed to December, still have some sort of discourse with the other.
Exactly.
Okay.
And, for example, you, you're just picking up, so you'd be sitting now.
Right.
Kind of sharing expectations.
The other part of this in discussion, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to see if we can come up with some criteria that some of these are based on when we do a performance review. Like one, have they done their performance reviews with their people?
Yeah.
Put certain criteria in there that we can grade them on, whether they did or they didn't, and let's see what's going on here. Okay, to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay, the other, and maybe this gets to that, we're using a set of forms that have been around a long time, and that's not an issue, but they're not management kinds of rating factors. They're more, they're geared to a different level.
Right.
Of employee than our direct reports. And I would propose we look at changing the, changing the forms and the rating.
I agree.
Elements.
If you recall, a couple of years back, three years or so, we came up with a whole, I think there was three or four different styles and stuff. And I know one of them I brought back from New York and New Jersey when I worked down there, and their performance reviews were based on numbers, okay? So you had to achieve like a 62 in order to get, you know, level funded or funded, okay? And then if it would be low that, then you had to write a whole, you know, there's a whole process, step, there's like a four-page process, but it was an easy process that you could go by because it's a checkoff list. What you do is basically give everybody what their expectations are supposed to be. And then when you go and do your review, you check off, did they do the expectations, okay? And you just go down the list. So it's so easy to do because then you look back and did the person do it or didn't he? Yes or no? And it's graded, you know, 1 through 5, and just circle which one you felt that he did best on, he or she, something like that.
I would propose, I'll move, that we request some help from our HR advisory committee.
Only if they know what they've done, if they haven't done it before, it's useless, okay? Because somebody, you have to get somebody that has done that kind of a, that kind of work, okay? Worked with job descriptions, worked with performance reviews and stuff like that. Okay, if they haven't done it.
The chairman of that committee has extensive, that's her job, yeah.
And other participants on the committee have run major bank corporations.
Doesn't matter.
Well, they have people.
The president of a bank doesn't know how to appraisal something. I mean, a thing sometime.
They know what's important to, they know what's important in terms of evaluating people, that's a key part of their job. So, well.
We want to make it as simple as possible.
And then, but part of that, any one of us or anyone else can provide them some input and suggestions.
To me, I would rather have that committee focus on getting something done as far as looking at the process. So right now, we have wages that start on the low end to the high end. What is the process to get from the low end to the high end? Is it years of service, is it this?
Oh, no.
They should be working on stuff like that, that helps people that are on the low end to get up on the higher end. What can they be expected? There's no criteria that does a step performance, so to speak.
It should be performance.
Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Forming a seat doesn't count.
I don't want to interrupt anybody.
No, that's okay.
Let's go through the chair.
You can jump in any time.
Okay, well, I guess I agree with both of you on this. I think that the HR department, if you have a job description that somebody was hired for, then that helps you, or should help us in creating the appraisal form or the performance review, because the expectation of why they were hired is there. The goals should be measurable. I mean, they, you know, they just, the majority of them should be measurable. And along those lines, to your point, Ed, I think that if somebody is meeting the goals and meeting their performance, then that is what would then lead to perhaps a different category of salary. So I think they're somewhat tied in with one another. I don't think it was seconded, but to Jeff's motion as far as referring it to the HR, I think it might be something that we at least bring to them and say, listen, here's what we're looking to have you guys do. Can you put together, you know, some performance reviews? We'd like to see this and there as far as some of the, some of the, some of the questions for us to go through. And then, you know, before we, obviously, before we vote on it, we can, you know, we can go through it and take a peek at it and offer our suggestions or other people who are familiar with that and have a background in doing performance reviews.
Everybody has to remember that when you get a bad review, it doesn't mean that the person is no good, it means that they need help getting up to where they should be.
Agreed, yep.
Okay, so it's constructive criticism, all right, that we're looking for here. But on the other hand, when we do the review, we don't want to give a bad review. I don't want to give a bad review because there's so much work involved to give a bad review that it's time-consuming because you've got to come up with ideas on how we're going to help you get along and move this thing forward and come back into a better position here. So, and then you have to, you have to do like quarterlies or monthly reviews to make sure that he's following through, he or she is following through. So it's, it's a tough situation here when you get into performance reviews.
Yeah, I think the goal would be ultimately, you know, with my background, working for different corporations, the ideal situation would be to have those kinds of discussions before the yearly review. So you can have the discussion with somebody and say, you know, here's where you are, you know, where do you think you are, here's where we think you are, and what do you need to continue forward, or you're doing great, or maybe you need a little help with X, Y, Z, but you do that at either a three-month or a six-month interval before you get towards the ultimate performance review, which gives everybody a chance to improve if that's what's necessary.
Right.
Or to stay on track if that's where they are.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay. So to move this forward, how do we want to proceed here? We're going to start with the first.
I would, I'll move again to refer to the HR advisory committee, request for suggestions on a format for direct reports, the board has selected.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
A little bit further discussion. I think that's part of the input, Brian said to start.
We'll decide.
Give them some ideas on how, where we want it to go. Because we don't want it to be complicated, real complicated.
Exactly.
We want it to be as simple as possible, but yet instructive here. Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, DPW director. Phil, you got the reports here?
Well, let's, let me touch base on the Route 5 project where we had the wire break. The job is completed, we did it last week, so we're just waiting for the invoices to come in. Replaced the line, received all the permits from Mass DOT and proceeded as soon as we received them, so the job is complete.
Park items?
I saw your, the list there.
Overhead lines.
I don't know what else to tell you about the overhead lines. I mean, we've contacted, we've sent Verizon the check. You know, I don't know. I mean, I followed up a couple of times with them about moving those lines and they're still there, so.
So.
I have no answer for that.
Can we find out who the head honcho is and get in touch with them?
I've called the person that we sent the check to who's in charge of the engineering service there and.
Oh, I think you need to go further to the head of the company and go there.
You know, and I don't know.
You're not getting any response from the lower end, you certainly have to go up the ladder.
Well, we can certainly try to follow up some more on that, but.
Okay, so we've made the request, got the engineering work, we've even paid for it, we're just waiting for them to execute.
Absolutely, and, you know, I thought it would have been done by now, but.
Okay, the vestibule and the fire station? All they're talking about is the door and the roof. And that little back-end entrance area, what?
I got it, I gave, we got a plan or I gave them a plan a couple of months ago, and I thought we were supposed to proceed with that. And Phil, you were supposed to check into it because you said something about it that was on hold again, and I'm not sure what's going on.
Well, I checked the minutes, and the minutes state that this, the door and removing.
Yeah, it's a real simple thing.
The roof, that's there.
Removing the roof that's there, without putting another roof on?
Correct. Just cutting down the brick wall. Height to the four-foot height or whatever it is there, and replacing the door.
What was our original?
There's been no lot of originals.
Whatever we finally voted on was what exactly Bill Beldon came in here and said is what he wants.
Correct.
He was sitting right there, second seat. So.
What was that?
I don't know.
Wow.
Yeah, all he cares about is getting the door replaced, that's all he cares about.
That's all he cares about is the door replaced, but I care about what's going over that and what's going to look good in front of that building, okay? And if you put back what was there originally on that building, there was like an 8x8 or a 12x12 roof, a hip roof that came out from that step to cover those steps, and that was it. That's all was needed, and I think you came up with a $7,000, I think that's what the price was, $7,000.
I don't even remember now, Ed. It's changed so much that, you know, I know that when the.
The wall had to be cut down and they can't, you can't take the wall, all the concrete block walls, they can't come all the way down, they got to be capped off.
Right.
Because that's part of the steps, the steps are built into that.
And the last minutes that the board approved when Mr. Beldon was here was to cut the wall down, cap it, and put a door on, period.
You have to have a roof over.
I'm just telling you, that's what the board approved.
I mean, in winter time, the snow is going to get in front of the door, it's a whole mess. And what's going to look good on the end, on the front of that building?
That's why the project hasn't moved until we come to.
So I guess what I'd like to do is, I'd like to go back to the original proposal and.
Bring back, bring back what we approved.
Okay.
And show us what it was and that Bill recommended. Wire roll hanging next to the vestibule?
I have, I don't know what that even is. I mean, and.
That's the old telephone line that comes from the street, and they coiled it up and left it against the building. That's on that, on the front of that building.
There's that, the old gas meter pipe is there.
Yeah, old gas meter. Yeah, old gas meter.
The gas meter is there. That should be all taken out.
There's some wires associated with this. Radio wires apparently.
Need to get ahold of the gas company and see if they'll take that stuff out of there.
So, is there a question of what? What bothers?
What wires or what?
Well, wire roll hanging next to the vestibule. Used for radios for the fire department, but hanging as they are right now, they pose a safety risk.
I think what they're more concerned about is the kids playing around there and then getting into the wire that's reachable off the ground.
Old gas meter. How about that?
Yeah, it's the old gas, just the stub sticking up there that has to be removed.
Get ahold of the gas company and take that stuff out of there.
They can remove that because they put the new gas main into that building.
Okay. Is someone doing that?
See that?
Yeah. Send it to everybody.
Yes, I'll make the call at Berkshire Gas about that. As far as the wires go, I don't know what's good, what's not good, what was it for. I have no idea what any of that stuff is.
Two wires that come, that are over the basketball hoop right now. Okay? One wire is from the federal, the...
The broadband is one.
The broadband.
And the other one's Verizon.
The other one is from the cable TV. Okay, those are the two wires I believe that are there.
I thought Verizon had a wire there.
Unless, unless cable moved there.
I think my G4 wire is there.
Okay, then it's Verizon's wire.
But as far as the wires that are on the building, like the radio wires, I don't know what's what there. I don't have any idea. I mean, I think that the fire chief or somebody should just say that that can go and call the proper people to remove it.
The other thing, Paul, we also have a problem with the contractor because the contractor removed the unit inside the building for the broadband. They removed all the information, pulled the wire off the building and it's sitting out there in the dirt and he never put it back up. So, that's a whole nother issue. Okay? And nobody knows what happened to the box that was inside. Okay? Where we have all the terminals and stuff like that. Contractor took it apart and he says, "Well, we had it all over there and it's gone." So, but he's the one that was supposed to secure everything. So, that's a whole nother issue in regards to...
Well, I mean, I don't want to waste time here going over this if we haven't done anything on any of these. What, what's the way ahead or?
Well, like, I think, you know, I mean, there's an issue with the contractor. That's one of the issues with the broadband system.
No, I'm talking about all the rest of them here. Old gas meter, electric meter.
As far as the radio wire that's wrapped up in the front, where did it come from? I don't even know. Where did it go? On what?
On the front of the building, the radio wires that are rolled up in a ball there.
First of all, you've got to look and I'm pretty sure there'll be telephone, Brian, you'd be able to tell. There are telephone wires?
I mean, I don't know what the wire, if they were for radio, they, one of two things. They either terminated on an antenna on a building or they terminated in the building into what sounds like is no longer there at that termination.
I think that was for the existing, the wire that's on the building was for the existing old milkman school.
I mean, I would assume if they're rolled up, they're not in use, so...
Comes from the pole over to the building and it's wrapped up.
But it's not attached to anything at the fire.
Right. It's just sitting there. Right. So, to me, they could snip it off at the pole and if they want to use it again, they'd just run the wires over.
On the surface, without knowing much, I would agree with you, Ed. If they're rolled up, then they're not in use.
Right.
But they should be brought, they should be taken out so nobody gets hurt or gets into any sort of an issue. But it might be up to the chief to verify everything is working the way it's supposed to be working before anybody touches those things, just to be safe.
Well, I'll tell you what. Instead of wasting our time, we have a list here from Rec Committee, Bob Betzel. He's just trying to clean up these loose ends so the place is safe for use.
So, we'll talk to the...
You're going to, so I would move to have the day actor, DPW, talk to fire chief and about all these issues and resolve the way ahead.
Okay, a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, motion carried. Phil, you'll take care of that. Okay, is there anything else?
Yeah, I got more.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is, Phil's going to get out. Remember, we had a reply due not later than or before one June on the rails to the Department of Public Safety Architectural Access Board on our...
Yep.
Out here. And that's due.
I thought the rails were...
Well, we just need to turn in the report.
We have to take the before, we have the before pictures. We have to take the after photographs and send it out with a report that it was completed according to code.
Has the railings going downstairs been fixed yet?
There's one plate left to put on.
One plate, okay.
That's it.
It is so awkward.
Position your photograph.
Using those railings now, it's so awkward.
But it's in place.
Yes.
It's usable.
Correct.
Right? All right. May not be pretty, but it fixed, it's not complete work.
They're at the correct time.
The rails are up the inch that they requested.
Right. So, please get that in.
So, we need to get that out to them, right?
Okay, we already talked about...
Phil, you're going to take care of that?
Yes.
Okay.
And this week. And we already talked about the next report due in September, well, actually in August, that we created a stabilization fund. We put money into it, CPC funds and schedule of our actions leading to completion.
I'll watch it.
That's it for that. Vacation carryover?
Carryover? You asked for three weeks.
Yes, I do.
You don't get three weeks. What, you didn't take any vacation this year?
Yes, because I carry over three weeks every year because of accrued time because I go away in August. And with the accrued time, there's no way I can go away in August is if I get accrued time started.
What do you mean accrued time?
That's how I get my vacation. I don't get it upfront. I only earn 10 hours a month. So, to go away in August for three weeks, it's impossible between July and August to accrue.
So, that's what you're looking to, what you're asking to carry three weeks over?
Yes. That's what I carry over. That's when I go away in August.
Okay, but you go away for two weeks. You're looking for three.
Two and a half weeks I go away in August. There's no way I can have that time because I could carry a week anyway, so I'm asking really for an additional two.
Do you understand me? Because I go away in August. That's when I take my vacation in August. And you won't accrue it. I can't accrue between July and August.
You have to use the year before's, you have to use the year before's vacation time is what it boils down to.
So, is there a motion to carry over?
So moved.
Through.
Second.
What's made, second? Any further discussion?
Yes. Who's the charge when you're gone?
It'll be Jimmy LaValle.
Jim?
Well, Tony. The highway side will be LaValle, but Tony will be the contact person.
Okay. So, Tony's overall?
Yes.
Okay. So, he's adjusted his schedule accordingly.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Now, we had another one here. Woodbridge Circle issues? This was Woodbridge Circle and some controversy about circle and removal of certain...
Bushes.
Bushes and things like that. And appears to be a little neighborhood issue underlying the whole thing. But there's been some emails looking for Phil to answer a few questions that they've raised. I think Phil originally began this with an understanding that he was just being open to some suggestions from the residents as to what they were looking for. And there was also an indication that essentially the residents were going to be picking up the tab. Fact is, the town doesn't maintain any of these circles.
Or commons.
Or commons. Along Main Street, essentially, the town owns the road up to the sidewalk. Well, the town doesn't maintain or mow or homeowners mow out in front. There's an example over, what's the other street? Goff Elm Street?
Pine Edge, Nolan Circle, same thing. You have...
Pine Edge, Nolan, the residents maintain that, so...
This is in the cul-de-sac itself.
Yes.
And it's the same thing with Nolan Circle or Pine Edge where they have the cul-de-sac as grassed area that the residents maintain. We do not mow it, nothing. They maintain it and we thank them for that.
Okay, but if they don't maintain it, then we have to maintain it.
We would have to cut it.
Once or twice a summer, like we do the...
When we get a chance. So, if, you know, I mean, if the grass gets high, it certainly causes a public safety issue, we would have to maintain it.
All right.
And as you all know, my feeling, you all know my feeling is that I am totally against a cul-de-sac with grass area on it. I think that's, if it's not maintained or if there's not a homeowners association to maintain it and it comes back to the DPW, it always and always will cause a headache within the department to maintain that.
Well, if I recall, is there trees there now?
There's a couple of trees on that cul-de-sac. There were some very large u's that were over 10 feet tall.
Which were a safety issue coming around there.
Which was a safety issue coming around that, that residents say no, residents say yes. There was an incident with a truck that went around the cul-de-sac. There was a blindside with children playing in it, which was brought to my attention and which one of the residents say, "Since I'm doing construction down there, can I just pull them bushes out?" And I gave him the permission to pull the bushes out, to come up with another plan. We were going to have a plan of what to do and then the neighborhood dispute started and people, all I wanted was input from the people to see exactly. I wanted to have a neighborhood meeting and see what they want in that cul-de-sac. And now it's...
I guess that's...
Now, it's arisen to more than that, I should say nicely.
Well, get it back in the box.
You know, and I have, I mean, the correspondence with the people that are emailing me is, "Set the meeting." You know, I'm available. "Let's set the meeting. Let's get everybody on board, on the same page. Who's going to do what? What do you want there?" And...
It's not up to us. If it were up to us, we'd have a tree and grass. That's what we would have. Okay? Just like we have at the pumping stations, just like we have up on Broad Street, just like we have over by Brian's house, it's grass. Okay? That's what's there.
That's right. It's easiest to maintain.
So, if you start doing one, you better do them all.
Well...
Okay? So, the bottom line is, what we do is trees and grass and maybe a fence and that's about it. Okay? So, if somebody else wants something different, like up on Main Street here, and they're willing to take care of it, then let it be. Okay? But as far as the town's position, I think that's the position that you should hold. Okay? You shouldn't, you shouldn't deviate from that because what's good for one is good for everyone.
All I was asking for was a little input to put out the fire.
Well, hold your ground on...
I mean, it doesn't mean that that's the plan we would go forth with, but just a little input.
Yeah. We trust that you'll hold, you'll handle that, but please get back to the people. Make sure that we don't get letters that you're not responding and stuff like that.
Well, I've been responding through email through them and I, you know, "Set the meeting." That's all I'm asking is for them to set the meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You got anything else?
Yeah, I got one other thing.
Go ahead.
I thought, I thought at one time we had decided on doing some work on the front of this building. We had, you know, the pillars, they're all chipped and everything. The rails, there's, some of them are broken off and they're just laying against the metal. Railings just laying against the building. I thought we had agreed some time ago that we were going to use some of our facility maintenance money to at least paint that front, front area.
You've got painting on there? Because I've got the...
Yeah, there's...
We've got painting in there.
The rail's broken, the chips and the steps.
The step, the main step itself, the one that comes up into the door, that has to be replaced now because they're starting to flake and somebody's going to trip right out on their head going right out the door. So, I just saw that again today. And then, like Jeff says, going down the stairs, it's deteriorating, the water's getting in between the stairs and starting to pop that in the wintertime. So, we really need to do something with that whole front end. And if we can put in for CPA funding to do some of that, okay, that's restoration.
Yeah.
Okay?
Very good.
You're looking to restore the railings, restore the steps.
Yeah, it's an expensive project.
Even in the painting, the painting part of it, that's what restoration is all about on CPA. Okay? We did that for the church down here and they restored the whole, the rotted portions of it and then repainted everything. So, there's no reason we can't put in again this year and get going on that and use some of our funding for that.
Okay. I just, as long as we're going to do something, it just, it's getting worse.
Yeah, I mean, we looked at the stairs there last week and, you know, every place where the railing goes into that step is broke out.
Yeah.
Every one of them, every single one of them.
Right.
So...
All right. So, all right. So, as long as, as long as you've got that on the radar and we're going to do something.
Before I came to Hatfield, I know that you had done the steps out there at one point in time.
I did.
Yep.
And that was good, that was back in 80. I remember doing them in 84, 86.
I know that. They were replaced.
Replaced that, yeah. Reset them, that's what we did. We didn't reset, we reset.
We've also now, though, cleared the air with...
Right.
The AA Architectural Access Board that we don't have to change the front. So, that's taken off the plate. That may have been one of the reasons why we're deferring doing the work, because we may have to change to make that ADA compliant. We don't have, we got that ruling already, so we can put some dollars into the front end as is. All right, so you're running with it?
Okay, I got a couple of things more, you got anything else on that, Jeff?
I got a million things.
Couple of things, the grass at the library, Phil, excuse me, around the library, there's branches, there's leaves around all the trees, it was really not a good scene
Yeah, you know, it was unfortunate that the community service didn't have a chance to get there, because that's what's on their list to do, but...
But if they can't, why didn't our highway guys go down and at least trim some of that, just to make it look decent? That's all I'm asking, I mean, I was a little embarrassed to go and, you know, go down and during the presentation, and see the grass up a foot around all the canons, there's a lot of stuff going on down there. The canons in itself have moss growing on them, or mold growing on them, just the building, around the buildings, around, in front of the elementary school, the trees, that should be, that grass should be trimmed, and then the sign going into the, where the telephone pole is going into the school off of Main Street, the grass is three feet high, it's up to the mailboxes, okay? I mean, what's it take, you know, Bill Young used to take and carry a weed whacker on his truck and just go and do it, okay, because it looked good, you know, I mean, that's all we're asking, is to make it look good, especially when we're doing a presentation, or parade, or something like that, and it should look good all the time, it shouldn't just look good every once in a while. The other, let's see, Chapter 90, is there anything, I know we've got extra money, are you planning anything with sidewalks with the extra money?
There's no extra money.
There's no extra money, yeah.
We've got an extra...
That couldn't be allocated towards sidewalks?
That's the money he's doing Mountain Road and All Stage with.
Correct, okay. You might wanna take a look at Upper Main Street above where I am, all right, the trucks are really starting, pretty soon you're gonna be picking the chunks of blacktop out of the road, that's how bad it is up there, the weight of the trucks are really doing a job on the road up on that end of Main Street, so you better watch it, because you're gonna end up doing a lot of restoration, or a whole new road up there if you're not careful. You're probably gonna have to mill the whole thing right down as it is, because the weight of the trucks going up there. And, okay, that's about, the last thing I've got is owner unknown roads, okay, there's, I think about four or five owner unknown roads we're looking at, and Paul, were you involved in that or not?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, there's roads in town that are unknown, whether the town owns them or not, and one of them is School Street, I was very surprised at School Street from Chestnut up to the intersection there, that's owner unknown, and...
School Street from?
Or, it's not owner unknown, it's, what is it called?
Well, yeah, it's owner unknown.
Owner unknown, yeah.
Yeah.
It used to be, I think, Depot Road, remember that, and Bridge Street used to be Depot. This is historical, because there used to be Trade Depot out on the end down there.
Cronum Hill Road is also a...
So is it because they changed the name, there's some confusion, or?
Oh, we're just going by the map that was prepared, you know, some years ago, there was some research done.
But he is using the map for
That's the official map.
A gospel, okay, that was approved at town meeting, and what we're saying is there's roads, like Basin Road, there's about 500 feet, or 300 feet of Basin Road, that's a town road, and on both sides of that, it's owner unknown, okay? So I think what we need to do is, we either have to have an attorney research it, or we go back to town meeting and accept those roads as town roads. That would be the most least expensive way to go about, okay, because they've been in existence for years and years. And then if there's any issues on some of the roads, like Little Naponton Road, or something like that, if there's an issue, then it'd probably have to be researched, but some of those, I think we need to just straighten out at the next annual town meeting, and put it together, go ahead.
Maybe we should, without actually having to go through the attorneys to investigate it, maybe we should just ask the question, or tell them, here's what we're showing, and just maybe get a little guidance from them, just to make sure, before we brought it to town meeting, that's all I would offer on that.
So...
Just to make sure, no issues.
What I'd like to do, Paul...
How can you do it without researching? You mentioned Little Naponton, I understand one of the parties, their, his deed shows he owns half the road, so you can't just
It was a right of way.
Make the road.
It was a right of way. See, years ago, Ferry Road, example by my house, okay? Ferry Road back in 1600s, 1700s, early 1700s, the owner owned all that land, he gave what's known as Ferry Road now to the town fathers, okay? It was, he just said, here, you can have this for a ferry, and it became the town road, and that's how it was adopted years ago, okay? So if people had a right of way going through their land, and it was given, and everybody's using that, then it's basically accepted through the selectmen back then, in the early days, okay, and that's how it became town roads, okay? So if there's no tracking of it, or there's no town meeting that says that it's a town road, you know, it's not...
Well, what do you do with the landowner that owns half the road, I guess?
Yeah, that's what I mean, you talk about not having the research.
They have to give it up. If you're researching it, like one of these here, if they own the center road, they're gonna have to...
The town's gonna have to take it?
Yeah.
Either take it, or have them gift it to the town, there's two ways to do that. It'd be cheaper for them to gift it to the town, and the town to take it, so, but there's certainly, we need to look at some of the stuff here to clean it up, and there's only like about five, I think.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, there's not a whole bunch of them, there's about five of them. Cronum Hill Road was one of them, Basin Road was another, Little Naponton was another, and School Street, which I was very surprised, School Street, that's been in existence forever, okay, but, so, and then I think there's what, one or two other ones.
Yeah.
But we need to look at that. So my point being here is to start a folder for next annual town meeting, and make sure that we get them on the agenda, okay? Paul?
Well, we gotta, we don't have to do it right now, but we should define the scope of what we're looking at. For example, there's a road that goes along, the town road goes along the river, comes up by...
Williams's House.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right between Larry's and the neighbor's house, there's like a 12-foot right of way, and that's where the old Main Street used to cut down to the river, and then go over Kellogg Hill, and then back out by the sewer treatment plant.
Some of those we should consider discontinuing.
Could, I didn't really, I only wanted to bring that up to just let everybody know, we'll put that as a future agenda item.
Okay. I only brought it up, we ought to look at scope of what we're gonna look at, because there's a lot of other, there may be some county roads that we wanna either discontinue formally maintenance on, or take other action on.
Okay, Paul, you're on.
All right. On the sign by law, I made a copy of Hatfield's sign by law in your packet, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that there is such a thing on the books, and it states that anyone who wants to put a sign on town property needs a permit from the Board of Selectmen, and I looked into this, because I, during the election season, I noticed that there are quite a few political signs that were obviously on town property, and, you know, I'm not, I'm used to that not being allowed, so I, well, I've been going through the bylaws to familiarize myself with them anyways, and I came across it, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because apparently, from my understanding, it's been allowed over the years, and so the law's been ignored, essentially.
When this was created, Paul, this was the intention of a business sign, okay? That was the intention here, so it wouldn't, the business sign would not go over onto property. It did not mention, like, tag sale signs, it did not mention, because it's the commons here, the, in front of everybody houses, that's town property, and the intention of this whole thing was business signs.
Yeah, it doesn't say that, though.
I know it doesn't say that, but I remember when that happened.
Okay, that's what it was about.
And I keep, after, like, Pine Valley Planning Council, when they were doing these here, is, why don't you have an explanation of what you mean here as far as Section 3.07? What's the intent here? And they said it'd take too long to put in, okay? But if you had the intention, you'd know where the guideline is, okay, that it only included commercial signs, and such.
Well, as Paul's mentioning, that may have been the intent, but that's not what it says.
And that's not what it says, that's correct.
And most towns won't allow it, that I'm familiar with.
You have homeowner signs, for sale signs.
Yeah, well, that's...
It's the same thing, if you're gonna start that, and that's not the intention here, that deters from somebody trying to sell their house even, okay? So if anything, I think we should reconsider that, maybe change it so it's, the intention is there, and discuss it at a future, put that on our agenda for another meeting, okay?
Well, there's pros and cons.
Yeah, it's far too vague as it stands now.
Yeah, I read it, and I saw exactly what you were looking at.
Yeah.
And then, I knew it, because I was part of that, you know, when they were doing that years ago.
Okay, all right. I made copies of building inspector resumes, there's four in the packet, I actually received one more after the packets were put together, but that individual is clearly not qualified. There's only the four that are in your packet, there's only three that are qualified, so...
So would you like to proceed?
One, we need the set of questions, and then we need to schedule the interviews.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is set up probably a separate meeting, just to discuss this here, and...
We could do one, all right, first of all, we're not going to appoint a screening board?
No.
Okay, so we're gonna do that.
We'll do that.
So, we can, one time, do an executive session, you can either do the screening in executive session, or you can...
Only the screening.
Only the screening.
Only the screening.
So we can, if we choose, do the screening in executive session, screening.
I don't know if we really need to do an executive session.
All right, so, have a public meeting?
Pick a day to do it, or somewhere, a night, or whatever, and just do it, okay? Just have an off-camera meeting, and just do it, okay?
Okay, I'm just saying, one can be an executive session.
So we'll need to, I'll set that up with Paul, we'll set up a meeting...
Well, we need to get their questions straight, and who's gonna ask what questions?
Yeah.
And then we need the...
Just like we did before.
The schedule.
I think we've all been through that.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, so, I'll work with you, and we'll set the meeting day up with these guys.
Figure out the schedule.
Got to be careful, because the schedule, everybody's going on vacation and stuff, I don't know when everybody's gone here, so we'll try to get that done ASAP.
For two and a half weeks.
Maybe next week, if, Paul will be in touch.
Well, we should try and do it at a time we can get them all done, sit down once and...
Well, that would be the intention, to go through them, and look at them, and I think you guys looked through the whole thing, and then can come up with what we're gonna ask for questions, and be ready, and then set our dates.
Oh, okay, okay.
Set our dates of interviewing, and that kind of stuff.
Okay, so two parts, one, resolve our questions, talk about the candidates.
We'll get together first, we'll get all our questions, resolve anything that we have, and then we'll go into step two, and that's the interview process.
Right. Well, I would propose we do that in an executive session, because you're gonna, if you're gonna outline all the questions you're gonna ask everybody, then...
In advance, if you want.
In advance, then...
Yeah, but it's not like you can have all the people sitting there.
Well, I'm...
But the opportunity would be there for them, too, if it's a public session.
They could all, and you may want to talk, and maybe some of these folks...
That's okay with me, I don't have...
We could do the actuals in open session.
Right, okay, then we'll set that up.
Okay.
Okay.
Could I just ask a question about that? So we're gonna get together ahead of time, which makes total sense, but when are we looking to begin doing the interviews? Were we gonna do them all one night, is that the plan? Like everybody, it's a half hour, or whatever it is? So we probably should try to let these people, you know, the candidates know sooner rather than later, as far as giving them a date, I mean, we could do that now, even though it's gonna be out a few weeks, while we still are gonna go through the questions and narrow those down, I just, to make sure everybody who's a candidate has a few weeks' notice to, you know...
Yeah, but in order to set the schedule up, then we can set the schedule up now for interviews, maybe in two weeks, or something like that, or a week and a half.
Well, that's what I mean, just, right.
But we may choose after our session to not interview a particular...
Yeah, we're gonna pick who we want to interview.
Gotcha, I thought we were just going through the questions.
Well, the questions, but there's a lot to do in that process.
Our initial cut.
Got it, I didn't, I didn't...
Yeah.
There may be qualified people, but...
Right.
So...
Understood.
If you want to look right now, see what you guys got available next week, we can set up a, you know, we'll set up a meeting next week.
Sooner rather than later.
Yep. All right.
Well...
Because I know, I'm pretty sure I got open Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and next week.
Are we gonna do this in the evening?
I'd like to do it first thing in the morning, if we...
Okay, so, while we're on the topic, I mean, I, yeah, first thing in the morning is fine with me.
Like eight o'clock, or eight thirty?
Eight o'clock, the earlier the better, Ed, because I, you know, I had to take a half day off for work to attend this meeting today, so...
Okay, well, we can do it...
So eight o'clock is fine.
We can do it later in the afternoon, too, you know, five o'clock at night if you want, too.
Whatever works for the majority of you guys, but, you know, first thing in the morning, or late in the afternoon, is, I would appreciate it on a go-forward basis.
On me, I don't like to do late meeting nights, like at seven, I'd do five, or six, something like that, I could do that.
Four thirty?
Four thirty's okay, I can pull that off. Always pushing, Mr. Boyer.
How about five?
Five works, too.
That'll give me an extra half hour to get my work done.
How about either Monday or Tuesday?
Monday, Tuesday, I'm out, Jeff.
Okay.
Hold on, let me get my calendar here. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Not Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday's okay.
Wednesday's okay.
Wednesday at five o'clock?
Sure.
Okay, Wednesday at five.
Wednesday, Fourth, June, 5:00 PM, and Paul will post.
Mm-hmm.
That's a screening.
5:00 PM.
And actually, that should, we should be done in about an hour.
Yep.
Is that okay?
Wednesday the Fourth.
Wednesday the Fourth, 5:00 PM.
At 5:00 PM, good, got it. Okay. Okay, what else we have there, Paul?
Proposed classification grade changes, the Human Resource Advisory Committee met several times, there were requests from some employees for grade changes, some were denied, some were approved, so there's a letter in the packet from the chairman of the advisory committee, basically asking the board to accept the proposed grade changes as part of the, you know, personnel policies, as they were submitted two years ago, and, you know, basically, with a couple of grade changes, as amended. So I was talking to Jeff earlier, and he thinks, and I agree, that there needs to be some tweaking done to the proposal, because there's a few things that aren't quite clear, some of the positions listed don't exist anymore, so, yeah, just some minor work on my part, and then I think at the next meeting, I should have something that's clear and up to date, that you can take a vote on.
Here, I'll make a motion on this. This is a long one. I move that the board adopt, as advisory, the 2012 proposed revision to the 2001 compensation and classification plan for town of Hatfield, B, that it adopt the job classification and position title changes recommended in the HR Advisory Committee Letter of 22 April 2014, and C, that the town administrator, in coordination with the HR Advisory Committee, draft for Board of Selectmen approval, a proposed annex to the HR policy reflecting these changes.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. You know, what I'd like to say is that, when I was looking at this whole thing, the new committee on the grade, on the wage changes, 12 years ago, we did a study, we paid X amount of dollars for the town to do a study on the wage status. Then when I saw the changes, they took what was done 12 years ago, and actually downgraded everybody's wages into a different category, so that means everybody, if they were at $30,000, now they're down to $24,000. That doesn't make sense to me. 12 years ago, it was done professionally, and this is what came up with, did you notice that?
Well, no.
If you take a look at what was done in the study, on the wage...
I have to say, I never really took a look at the 2001 study.
If you look at the 2001 salaries compared to what was done now, everything is lower than what was done back, not everything, but there's a lot that's lower.
Well, I'll have to take a look at that.
Than what was done, so I just want to bring to everybody's attention, before we start voting, to make sure...
Okay, but, remember the language, we adopted as advisory, not final, because he's gonna go clean it up.
Okay, all right, I just, well, it's for discussion, that's why I'm saying, there's a couple things that might, just an explanation.
Right.
There might be a...
Sorry, so do we have, or can I, may I receive the two, you know, the 2001 report and the...
You should have the whole thing.
Yeah, I've got it.
And the, you know, the new proposal, so, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, the last thing, just want to state here, we'll give you also something else here, review the procedures for the agenda, Brian, just for your sake, when we create the agenda, and this seems to work really good, the chairman will do the agenda, and then you guys, if you've got something, you just tell Paul, and we add it on the agenda, okay?
Yep.
That way it's open for anybody to add, too, you know, in case you've got something that's, that needs to be added, or something like that.
Sure, all right.
It's pretty open, so, you know, we all, it's been working that way pretty good for the last couple of years, so...
All right, thanks.
Just want to let you know.
Thank you.
And Jeff, I want to thank you for being chair of this past year, you did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I do. Paul's working the shared accounting thing from PVPC, we also got from PVPC, follow-up to our vote a few years ago regarding the Connecticut River Byway.
Yes.
And at the time, they told us there were a number of studies, and this was a lengthy process, well, I didn't realize it was gonna be this long, but he was right, it's a lengthy process. But in any event, there's a grant out there, and they're looking at updating the corridor management plan for the Connecticut River Scenic Byway, and they're including in this update of the management plan Hatfield. And this would essentially designate Elm Street, Maple, and Main as part of this scenic byway. The other side of the river, 47, Route 47 is already there, and the value to us is, it opens up opportunities for money for our roads, money... And the value to us is, it opens up opportunities for money for our roads, money for signage, money to advertise things in Hatfield that people want to stop and see. In any event, we've got nothing to lose. They asked for a couple representative, representatives. I've confirmed with both Bob Wagner and Mark Chilot, their willingness and real interest in serving and representing the town on this committee. Only meets about four times a year, it's advisory, and they'll be working with these other, other communities as part of updating the corridor management plan.
Motion to...
Yeah, so I move that, one, we confirm with PVPC our continuing interest in participating in this Connecticut River Scenic Byway initiative, and two, that Mr. Bob Wagner and Mr. Mark Chilot will be our representatives on the advisory committee.
Motion made, is your second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank both of them for always being willing to do these types of things.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Okay, now, there's a meeting, June 25th, 5:30, at the Sunderland Library, first meeting for these guys. So the other thing, I sent you a copy of this thing.
Oh, you did, okay.
So you need to give Chris, you know, their telephone numbers and email addresses, and...
Okay.
And let them know that the board has appointed them, and remind them of the meeting.
Yeah. Our next meeting, I just want to take up a little bit of time on bike travel throughout the town, okay? I don't have a problem with bicycles, but when they go three abreast, and you can't get around them, and cars are coming the other way, it's a hazard. And we either set up a bylaw, or something, but we'll bring that up at our next meeting. Something's gotta be done, because they're out of control.
Well, the state has laws governing all this, and...
Because they have no consideration for the, for the motorist at all.
I think we probably first should get something from Chief Osley, saying, what are the rules regarding bike operations?
We'll bring it up at the next meeting, I don't want to take you more time.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other further business?
Oh, yes. Schedule. Oh, it'll be done before that. Schedule. We got the interviews scheduled. You know, we need to put out the call for potential end-of-year budget transfers, and we need, at some point, to schedule our session with the finance committee, to approve transfers of funds among, you know, to cover down any shortfalls that we have. I don't know what shortfalls we have, if any, actually.
Yeah, the last, the last printout that I got from Mike, there was, you know, four or five, none of them, and none of them all that big.
Okay, but, all right, just, it doesn't have to be done today, but we need to schedule that session for ourselves, what we want done, and then to schedule with the finance committee, because they have to bless it. And then meetings, you know, Brian's indicated he's working and has certain obligations, so we need to close on, in future meetings, in times and dates, and...
What's, can we, I don't know...
Well, let me tell you my schedule. So I, my normal schedule at work is 8:30 to 5:30. I can work eight to five, I can work nine to six, you know, it's somewhat flexible in that regard. You know, if we were, if, and I know today was a large agenda, so it, you know, was time-consuming, but, you know, if we meet...
It's typically three hours.
Yeah, first thing in the morning, which, or at five, or, you know, whatever you guys are agreeable to. But I really can't afford to not be doing, you know, working for three hours. So I took a half-day today, which is fine, I didn't mind doing it, but, you know, I mean, I wouldn't mind, and I know people, some of the department heads travel, but, you know, preferably, I'd like to see late afternoon or early evening. Personally, I think it certainly would help me, and I think it would also help the townspeople that, at least they would have access to come to a meeting. Whether they do or not, that's totally up to them, but 4:30, 5:00, I can pull that off.
Okay, because if we're looking at a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, which is, usually that's about what our meetings go, because we have a lot on the agenda, because it's every other week. I mean, the other thing we could do is go to a weekly meeting, but then it just makes it tough for everybody to gather together.
Right, could I make this suggestion? Why don't we, maybe the next couple, as we're scheduling them, do them at 4:30 or 5:00, and sort of see how the, how the routine's working, and, you know, I don't know if we're gonna change the workforce hours anyways, from Monday through Thursday, some of the people might be here later, and it wouldn't affect their Fridays, so...
I can do afternoon meetings, that's not a problem. I just don't like to do late nights. When it goes into eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night, it's, I'm blown away, it's like, I've got so much going on, and that's my rest time. So if we can try 4:30, I'm willing to do that, maybe on Tuesdays at 4:30.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so...
Are you good with that, Jeff?
Yeah, I'll live with it.
Well, I mean, I still think that, quite honestly, we should have the meetings when the townspeople can come, because most of them are working, so, doesn't mean they're gonna be here, but that's my personal opinion. School committee meetings are always at night, and, not that we have to do things that way, I'm just giving my opinion.
But quite frankly, we have them for years in the evening, and we had about the same number as you see right now.
And I understand that, but that's...
And part of it is because it's available on, on our local cable television, and people watch it there.
Yeah, but they can't be here, too, if they're watching it on TV, to say anything. So, you know, we, just giving my opinion.
The next question is, John, how are you between 4:30 and 7:30?
Generally okay, unless I have to go to the West Coast, and Mondays would be better, because I party everywhere on Mondays.
See, Mondays...
Day of the week doesn't matter to me. I appreciate your accommodations for late afternoons.
To me, it matters in the wintertime.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, whatever you guys...
On Mondays.
Yeah.
But I know I'm not going away till August, maybe. A couple months, I'm fine.
Well, wait a minute, time. So the next meeting would be when?
So it'll be in two weeks, only at 4:30.
Well, we got psyches social at night.
Making a quick meeting, well.
Farewell for Stanley.
Well, that might be the other thing. Schedule the meeting.
Farewell for Stanley.
And if we have to have an emergency meeting in between, because we've got something pressing, we'll do it. Now, and then what we'll do is, we'll cut it, cut an hour or so off of the other meeting.
Because that's, the thing for Stanley's at six, I believe.
Yes, it is, in Northampton.
Yeah.
4:30, 5:30, yeah, that's not gonna be, be right.
Could we do Monday night as an exception?
Oh, yeah, we can do it now. We can do it all up until October, if you want to do Monday nights.
Monday night, the ninth, oh, excuse me, the second and fourth, right? So that'd be the ninth?
Yes, second and fourth, be the ninth and the 23rd, the 23rd. I have a meeting on the 23rd. If we could stay on, on the second and fourth Tuesday, except when we have to, we can go to the ninth, you know what I'm saying? Like, this, we have another psyches...
It'll be the 24th.
Yeah.
Be the ninth?
It's usually the 10th and 24th, but instead of going to 10th...
Right, so Monday the ninth, and Tuesday the 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
At 4:30.
Just so you know, Brian, I'm, I'm on the Hampshire County Health Coalition, and I sit on the Western Mass Regional Homeland Security Council, and a bunch of other meetings I have done.
Many hats, yeah. So Monday, June 9th, and Tuesday, June 24th, both at 4:30 p.m., is that correct?
Yep, yep.
All right, thank you.
Two minutes to go, people.
Or 58 minutes late, depending on if you're looking at it.